Good to have members of staff here. Thank you all for showing up. Thank you for the good job that you're doing. We appreciate it, probably a lot more than you realize. We appreciate you being here. Nick's gonna do our invitation. Mike's gonna do the pledge allegiance to the flag. Mr. Mitchell?
As Chairman said, thank you all for showing up, taking an interest in the local government. Let us pray. Dear Lord, thanks for this day. Thanks for the ability for us to come up here and do the people's work. Lord be with us and help us make good decisions that'll benefit all of Franklin County. And send us some rain. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We got a really good shower. Rain at house. But you can't tell it now. It's gone from the other day.
You must've paid the preacher good.
But it's gone now. All right, Mr. Quinn, Supervisor Quinn. Dan's not gonna be here. And we need to do it remotely. And also, the county attorney will be attending remotely today. He's still under the weather. I suppose we need to make a motion and have a vote on, especially Dan. Somebody wants to make a motion for him?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we permit Supervisor Quinn to take part in today's meeting by telephone.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign?
Aye.
All right. Dan, can you hear us okay?
It's perfect. I couldn't hear Nick's indication, but maybe his speaker wasn't on. But everybody else, I'm hearing perfectly.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, are there any modifications or changes to the agenda, other than what we've already taken care of? Seeing none, motion that it stands approved?
I will.
Second.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right. Today, we were, we're gonna go in, we've got several little things that we're gonna talk about. And get into. And I think our first one will be the Smith Farm Medication Bank. Steve, that'll be, I'll turn that over to you.
All right, thanks, Mr. Chairman. So I'll just say, I don't have a PowerPoint prepared for this, but I can kinda recap what we talked about at the last meeting. And then, if you recall, at the end of that meeting, there was a motion to move forward with the RFP process. But there was also the part of bringing it back, or coming back at this work session to answer any additional questions, concerns that you had, or if there's any things specifically that you want us to make sure we include in the RFP process. I think that was the reason for having the discussion come back up. So I can go back, I do have the PowerPoint from the previous PowerPoint. I can go through some of that again, if you'd like. Or we can just see what questions are there and field any questions before we get into the zoning ordinance. We tried to leave, you know, a pretty good amount of time for that, for the zoning ordinance discussion. So I guess I'll just say, I know one of the discussions was, and questions from Mr. Chairman, was about maintaining those credits and maybe not giving away all those credits. And so, one of the things that we had discussed before was, by doing this RFP, we're not committing anything at this point. But that is one of the items that we can discuss with this third party is, what is the relationship for how many credits we wanna retain? What are the possibilities of utilizing a certain number of credits for maybe Franklin County projects? Maybe not county projects, but projects from developers in Franklin County, if that makes sense. And then, maybe another pot for those projects that may be outside of Franklin County. Does that make sense? Maybe look at a way to divide those up into categories. And I think we can do that by a percentage basis. We could, you know, we could have three different buckets, if we wanted to, for those credits. We can also look at phasing. And because as you create the bank, you know, the credits kinda come on in phases as you complete those aspects of the stream restoration and tree planting and so forth. So it could also be that we phase in those credits. As those credits become available, they'll be, you know, in Phase 1, we'll release 25% credits to people outside of Franklin County. Or we'll retain, in Phase 1, we'll retain 25% of those credits for county use. So I think there's a lot of different ways that we can work this. And so, through the RFP process, we can make them aware that these are some of the things that we're interested in seeing in their proposal. And then, once we get those proposals, and we have the opportunity to evaluate those, and we'll always be bringing those back to you for the final approval of which party we wanna go with, if we choose to go with any of them. You know, so putting out, I just wanna say, I guess, with putting out the RFP, we're not committing to anybody. We're not saying we're gonna approve any of those, but we're having an opportunity to get those proposals in and be able to evaluate those proposals. And then, if we wanna move forward, select the one that we think best fits kind of our needs and our desires. So if there are specific things you're interested in, as we kinda touched on some of those last time, we can certainly make sure those are included. And so, I guess maybe I'll start there. Is that something that everyone's kinda interested in, is maybe that bucket idea, or that percentage idea of retaining credits? Because I think, very valid point, I mean, we don't wanna give away all of our credits. And we certainly don't sell them in Year 1, and then have nothing. So I think it's a very valid point. And I just, I think there's various ways we could kind of address it. So if that's something we're interested in, kind of looking at, we'll certainly make sure that's part of, part of the discussion. And then, again, before any decisions made, we'll be coming back to the board with kinda what the offer is, or what the proposal is for how to handle that.
I appreciate, you know, your emphasis, what you're talking about. Because I definitely think we need to keep it for Franklin County. If there is, when we get the RFP, and we can find out from the outside agencies, what your demands is. But we need to take care of our county. Because I feel like that, that's paramount. And I feel like the rest of the supervisors feel the same way that we do. We need to.
And I think, as we move forward in this, I think I mentioned, it's probably 18 to 24 month process, really, to get all the approvals and get everything in order. I think as we work through the CIP, both this year and probably into next year, and we start to identify, hey, we are building this new building, or we are doing this, we can start to then kind of tuck those away, if you will, you know, credits. Because if we're building a greenfield development, you know, kind of a raw site, let's, I'll just, for the sake of discussion, I'll use a 911 center. If we say, we're gonna purchase a piece of property out here, and we're gonna build a 20,000 square foot 911 center, then we can kinda get a general idea of how many credits we may need at that point, if we know which, what the property is, how much land we're disturbing, and so forth. So as we go through the CIP process, and we identify if, if we have any of those, what I'll call, greenfield developments, we can start to tuck those credits away, because we'll kinda have a better idea of what's on the horizon. If we're utilizing existing buildings, or we're doing leases, then that's probably not gonna have an impact on the stream credit-wise. Probably won't generate a need for stream credits. It's really when you're impacting kind of raw land, or expanding projects on raw land. So adding on to a building, you know, might generate the need for some credits. Of course, all of that depends on, as far as stream and wetlands, if there are impacts to stream and wetlands. The nutrient credits, pretty much any kind of development is gonna trigger the need for some of those credits. So, again, as we kinda work through that planning process and those capital projects, that'll give us, start to give us indication of, okay, over the next five years, we kinda have an idea we're gonna need 100 credits for this project, and another 100 for this one. So that'll help us as we're going through this process, to be able to identify those future needs that may be out there.
Mr. Sandy, I know that staff is looking into some of this other property that we have, if we can sell it or not, because of the restrictions that are placed on it. But have you recognized any value for the same type credits in any of this property?
I haven't. Just kind of intuitively, I think there could be some value in some of those properties, especially, especially the ones that may be harder to market.
Suppose.
Yep. Generally, I think from a general sense, you can say, a property that is not in a great environmental condition is gonna be a better one to flip around into a mitigation bank, because you'll be able to get more credits, if that makes sense. You take it from a bad situation to a, to a good situation. So I think these sites that you mentioned are maybe a little more marginal, because there's, there's really nothing going on on those. They're wooded already. They're, they're kind of preserved to a degree. So the amount of credits may be a little less than, say, the Smith Farm, where it's being farmed, and there's cattle, and those kinda things. And there's quite a few streams running through, through that one. So each one's gonna be a little bit different, but I think there probably is some value to some of those properties that, that we could utilize. And even if we weren't doing restoration, it could be preservation, rather than restoration, for those properties. So I already have made a note that, you know, when we're discussing this, that those, we wanna take a look at those properties and see kinda what the value is, or, you know, what's the added value if we pulled in, let's use those properties in Windy Gap, if we pulled in those properties to this whole mitigation bank, what's the added value that we would get from, from those?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Steve, what is, do you know the current market value of the nutrient credit by pound?
Not off the top of my head, no. And it, and it does vary by the market.
Right.
Yeah, so I have some historical numbers, I think, in my notebook over there, but.
Yeah, I've got some historical numbers, but I was wondering what the current value.
It, I don't know the exact current value.
Thank you.
Has anybody else got any questions or comments for Mr. Sandy?
One question. This is kinda off the wall a little bit. Before we discuss creek creds and nutrient banks, is this something that individual citizens in the county that own property, that may have creeks and streams, that if they wanted to enter into some type of credit bank, that they could take part with?
And create one on their own property? Yeah, I think they could. They would, you know, they would likely engage with some group that does that, to kinda partner, similar with what we're talking about. Partner with someone who does that, to kinda walk them through the permitting process, and kinda help them assess the value of the credits and all that. So, yeah, I think there are opportunities out there for, that people could, could do that. Again, it, it, it's a, it's a process. So, you know, it takes time to go through the process, get the permits, and then be able to put those credits on the market. But, yeah, and I think you see some of that, where they're kinda leasing with a, with a partner. And in some cases, these other companies who do these banks will just buy the property from somebody, and then turn it into one of these banks as well. So I've seen where both cases have.
As, as we do our research and learn more about this, if we can, if we come across anything that could help our citizens, can we get that information put on our website or something, just?
We could try, yeah, we can try to do that. The other thing, I think, is, you've probably seen some of this, where I don't know if it's a USDA or NRCS program with, with farmers in particular, where they'll provide them grant dollars or incentives to fence off the creek. You've probably seen some of these, where now they're, they're planting trees along the creek bed, and it's very similar. It's a different program, but it's a kind of similar program and idea, to kinda preserve the creek bed and restore those areas. And so, I don't know if they get a tax break, or they get a grant, or both. But then, basically, they have to make sure that the cattle and things don't get back into the stream. And so, that's a program, again, I don't know if it's USDA or NRCS, but it's, it's a program run on the agricultural side. So individual homeowners would have that opportunity, as well as the opportunity to explore some sort of banking opportunity that where they could sell the credits as well, so.
Mr. Sandy, just one more quick follow-up. I've got a memo dated May 7th, 2021, that Mr. Burnett did as an overview on the stream credits and the bank. Can you take a look at that while we're working through all of this? And see if any of that information, I'm thinking it probably needs to be updated.
Probably so.
And it might be beneficial for the board to see some updated information.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anyone else got any questions or comments for Steve? Thank you, buddy.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Do we need to, by consent, move forward with the RFP, or?
I think that was done last time.
The clerk, that was actually already done.
Yeah, yeah, I think everyone, we agreed and voted on that to move forward. But we also agreed we would come back today, just for any follow-up questions.
Follow-up questions or anything?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Matheny, it's your turn.
Is everybody ready for this?
Say that again.
Said, is everybody ready for this?
I think so.
How is everybody?
I feel a lot better after our.
Good.
Conversation from the other day.
Hopefully, everybody says that, leaving this room today. Not that you felt bad before, but hopefully, this is beneficial. So we're gonna go through, it's, it's kinda long. I've built in some breaks, so that we can stop and pause and take a beat if you have questions before we keep going. Not necessarily that, that it builds off of each other, but I just wanna make sure what I cover in pieces, we're all good on, before we keep going. But if we get to the end, and you wanna talk about something 30 slides before, then we will. Yes, there are 30 slides, but I will go quick, as I'm physically able. For some reason, I thought it was a good idea to have a milkshake an hour ago, so my brain is half gone. All right, so we're gonna talk about the purpose of zoning, the format of zoning regulations in general. We're gonna touch very lightly on Code of Virginia and zoning ordinances, and how those two relate. That could be an entire class on its own for days. So we'll just touch real brief on that. And then we'll go over what is typically in a zoning ordinance, who regulates zoning regulations, and then the types of zoning actions/regulations that you see most often. And then, time, time willing, we'll touch one more time on the potential changes to our ordinance as a result of this update that we have coming. I just wanna go over that one more time after we get through this stuff, so hopefully, maybe if you didn't understand it before, you will now. You've seen this a lot. So all of our to-dos in planning really fall into two huge buckets. Plans, a vision, and then how you implement it. That's kind of how everything breaks down. And so, you've seen this slide many, many times. We have several planning documents, your comp plan, your Westlake Hills Ford area plan, your Faram, your Union Hall, other, the 220 corridor plans. Those set the vision. Those set the, the guide. Those have to be implemented, or else they're pretty useless. They just kinda sit there, and they look nice, and they, they might read well. But if you don't implement them, they mean nothing. And you have different tools to implement. Zoning is one of many, many tools. It's one of the more important ones when it comes to comprehensive plans. So just wanna, every chance I get to come up here, I'll probably touch on this. Zoning is a huge component of what our office does, and what, what kind of decides how land looks and feels. But it's, it's one part of a bigger picture, but it does work together with lots of other things. So before we get started, this one, I wanna just touch on. All of this gray area is the non-zoned area. Zoning regulations do not apply at all whatsoever. Other things do. You still need to get building permits. If you're clearing or grading, you need to get erosion and sediment control. If you're subdividing, you would have to comply with subdivision regulations. But zoning does not apply to anything in this gray area. And I don't have the square footage, but I would say maybe more of it's unzoned. Lisa might know off the top of her head.
Could be half and half.
But I just wanna call that out. So as we go through this whole thing today, I will, again, touch on some Code of Virginia, might tie reference to the comp plan, or this or that. But most of what I'm gonna talk about today is zoning specific. So anything in that gray area, free and clear. Any questions about this? Okay. You'll hear that a couple times. Yeah.
So, take, take, for example, right here, where the Snow Creek District touches the Union Hall District.
Right there. Okay.
When they do redistricting, and so, say, the Snow Creek District takes them in, those properties stay zoned.
Right. Redistricting is totally different than the zoning map. So redistricting is something different. Your zoning map, and we'll get to this, is your call.
That was my ques, so, this is the districting map, but there's still, on the other side of that line, are residents that are in the Snow Creek District, but across that red line.
So this is, this is the zoning map, yep. So how that red line was first determined, it might have followed a redistricting boundary at that time, that could have changed. So there are parts of your district that have zoning and don't have zoning. So if the redistricting lines change to, for 200 more times, the zoning, someone's property may end up getting zoned only if you all change this to match that. This doesn't change because something is redistrict. You have to change this specifically, intentionally, and separately. Totally different process.
Okay.
That, okay, so this one hasn't moved since '88. So the boundaries of your districts have, but this line hasn't, which is probably how your district came to be half and half over time. Blue Ridge is the only one that has no zoning at this point in time. Any other questions about this? Just what applies and what doesn't apply? And Steve kinda mentioned it, but we'll go over it a few more times. The update that we've talked about, and that we got your consensus on to move forward with the contract last time, that will not change this. It will not change how a property is zoned. Different process. We'll touch on that a couple of times. So the purpose of zoning, many, many purposes, but we'll, we'll touch on the four big ones. In a nutshell, it regulates how land is used. Not how it's broken up, that's your subdivision. Zoning is how land is used. What building is there, what use it might be, residential versus agriculture versus commercial. It's to meet Code of Virginia Section 15.2-2283. You'll hear me talk about Code of Virginia a lot in today's presentation. It's sort of like the big fat rulebook for zoning. We have to comply with a lot of what's in, in the Code of Virginia, and we'll touch on that. But at the very beginning of the relevant section that you will, about zoning, there's an entire chapter on it. It says that the purpose of, we're both asleep here. It didn't have a milkshake, but it doesn't wanna work. Okay. The purpose of zoning is, at the end of the day, health, safety, and welfare. You'll hear that over and over again, whether it's me up here, an actual professor that does this all the time, someone that's a little better at teaching this stuff. But at the end of the day, zoning is about health, safety, welfare. You will hear that over and over. You'll repeat it in your sleep by the time you're done with it. However, that section of Code of Virginia goes on to list out a few more specific things. All of these can be shoved into one of those health, safety, or welfare categories. So it's really to ensure that, that compatible uses are next to each other. We're preserving sensitive lands, whether that's agriculture that's important, historic lands, residential areas from industrial, that sort of thing. Fire safety, adequate access in and out of properties, so on, so forth. Riveting read, if you wanna read it at night, you'll go right to sleep, but 15.2-2283. The third big, big piece of zoning, or the purpose, is implementing that comprehensive plan. When we talk about the comprehensive plan, we're also talking about those village and area plans. There, there are many versions. Again, the comp plan is like the body, and then you have, the Westlake is an arm, the Faram is an arm, all of those little village plans. So this zoning is one way, subdivision is another, your CIP is another. But zoning is a big tool to implement your comp plan. And then the last one, that's a little bit outside of the lines. It can influence how land is developed or used without deeds, or restrictions, or agreements. Kind of how, the first one, regulating how you can use land. But for, for example, let's say, let's take the Smith Farm. I could be speaking totally off-base here, but I think there are some deed restrictions, and it has to be used for recreation, or something like that. Let's say that wasn't the case. Maybe you had a zoning district where those were the only uses allowed. You kind of get that same effect without putting in a legal document, well, this is a legal document, but a contract, a private contract. That's what I'm looking for. So it's, it's a way to influence what happens slowly over time, without requiring it through a real estate transaction, or that kind of thing. Few things about what zoning regulations can and cannot do. They designate land into districts. So they're not subdividing the land. It's not chopping it up, per se. The parcel's the parcel, but you're gonna, you know, this area is residential, this area is commercial, so on, so forth. It regulates the size and type of the building. We'll get to this in a minute. Not how it looks necessarily, but just the type that it is, and height, so that way, your fire trucks, they, they have the appropriate ladder. It meshes with what's already there. There are a few different reasons to have height restrictions. So size and type of building require development standards, like screening and setbacks, how far your building has to be set back from the road, or the property lines. Screening, if you're next to an incompatible use. Residential next to commercial is a good example. Industrial next to residential is another example. Protecting sensitive resources. This could be a number of things. The easiest one is a historic resource. Zoning could, could protect historic resources. Maybe you don't have a huge metal factory that puts out black smoke and lots of loud noise right next to George Washington's house, or something. So that's an easy one to target. Enhance community character with signage, parking, and landscaping. These are pretty easy. Typically, how parking standards go, it's based on the, the intensity of the use. So maybe a movie theater would have, require more parking spaces than, say, a coffee shop. So zoning ordinances will have parking requirements. They'll have signage requirements. How big a sign can be, how far back it needs to be from the road. If it can be lit, if it can't be lit, if it can be on a wall, if it can be freestanding. So these can get into lots of different things. Legislation recently, last 10 years, 15 years, maybe, we have to be careful about signage regulations as far as how things read. We can't regulate what signs say necessarily, but, but how they look, and if they're interacting with, with vehicles driving by, flashing lights, so on, so forth. And then another thing that zoning regulations can do is support affordable housing and economic development goals. This one's a little bit more abstract, and sometimes you have to read between the lines on, on something like this. But two examples would be, Code of Virginia allows affordable housing ordinances. It's sort of built in there. If you wanna build apartments, okay, fabulous. You can build 10 apartments, and then 1% more, you know, beyond the regulations, if you make some of them affordable. Economic development goals, maybe it's to make things quicker, easier, so that would come into your processes. So some of these are very finite and tangible, and you know exactly what we're getting at when we say them. But sometimes you have to think a little bit outside of the box for how zoning can help something. A couple of things that zoning cannot do. It cannot change or correct land use or buildings that are already in existence. This is called non-conformities. This is also a topic that could be its own class for days and days. It's very nuanced. But let's say that, that someone, let's say that we change zoning regulations tomorrow, and say, everybody in the A1 District has to have their house set back from the road 1,000 feet. All of those homes that are already built, that are not set back that far, would now become non-conforming. Doesn't mean they have to tear their house down. Really stark example, but just to show you, there, there are non-conforming lots, uses, structures. Again, it's, it's a whole thing that could take a lot of time, and we'll touch a little bit more on it towards the end. But zoning regulations changes cannot change something that's already operating, that's already in existence. Zoning cannot guarantee that development will take place. I know I've talked to you all about this several times, particularly with the comp plan and the village plans. It doesn't guarantee anything. It sets it up. It sets it up for success, to be one thing or another. It doesn't necessarily mean that someone's coming in the very next day to do that said thing. It does not assure that land uses will be permanent. Let's say something is owned commercial, you change the uses to allow large-scale commercial Walmart-sized store. Walmart comes in the next day. Doesn't mean Walmart will always be there. It could change. So it's fluid. The zoning regulations are not, you know, they don't change arbitrarily, or without due process or a sequence. But it doesn't mean the business or the use that's there. But it doesn't mean the business or the use that's there, you know, could not leave at any time at once. Zoning cannot treat similar uses differently. So we can't require, let's say, Mr. Thompson and Mr. Whitlow live side by side. We can't require a different setback for Mr. Thompson's house than we would for Mr. Whitlow's. We have to treat everybody the same within a district. So equity and fairness in those regulations. We cannot, through zoning, ensure that property is maintained. We get this one a lot. We get a lot of calls, whether it be, grass is really tall, someone's hitting the flea markets too much, and their front porch is now covered in dressers and rocking chairs and all kinds of other things. This can be accomplished in the state of Virginia through other means. Many rural localities, particularly counties, have a hard time doing it, and so we don't typically have them. But they're called maintenance codes. There's a mechanism called blight abatement. So there are options out there, we do not have it. That's not to say if something is dangerous, or a health code violation, there may not be somebody else you can call. But if it's simply the grass is too tall, it's looking a bit cluttered, zoning necessarily can't do anything for that. Caveats to about everything I'm going to say today. Junkyards are a different story. A messy yard is not necessarily a junkyard. Zoning cannot guide public or private investment in infrastructure. That's really up to you all, your partnerships, how you choose to make those partnerships, where you choose to spend your monies. But zoning itself does not place dollars somewhere. Zoning regulations cannot enforce private restrictions. So when we say this, we're talking HOAs, POAs, deed restrictions, restricted covenants, so on, so forth. Zoning regulations live separately than those private agreements. Typically, in most cases, and if Mr. Gwynn were here, he could probably expand on this a little further, so hopefully I'm not, you know, getting into deep water here. Usually, the more strict applies. So let's say a popular one here in the county is short-term rentals. Let's say the zoning ordinance allows them. And we'll choose A-one. You have a subdivision that is zoned A-one, but their restricted covenants say no short-term rentals. We do not trump them. The more restrictive kind of comes out on top. That's not to say that if someone operates it anyway, that Lisa, as zoning administrator, or her staff can go out there. We cannot enforce private restrictions. We only have control over the zoning ordinance. So we get this one a whole lot, whether it's short-term rentals or any other thing. It's the one we hear the most. But there are neighborhoods in this county that have restricted covenants against manufactured homes, or apartments, a certain fence height. So just bottom line, regardless of what the topic is, if it's in a private agreement, we cannot enforce it through zoning. Two separate things. So what we always do when we hear from them, direct them to an attorney. Hopefully, they have a good one. So that's a big one that comes up a lot, and it can get a little bit mixed up, but it is really as simple as it sounds. We do not have grounds to enforce anything there. Lastly, zoning regulations cannot regulate building design without the proper channels. So if you'll remember, when I started this slide, we can talk about the size and type of a building. We can even talk about maybe massing, size, you know, how it's shaped. We can't say it has to be brick. We can't say it has to have a green metal roof. We can't say how many windows and what style they are without proper channels. And when I say that, I'm talking about specific overlays, historic or otherwise. That goes back to that statement of treating everybody fairly. If it doesn't have a reason to have some design standards in it, it can't. A way that some localities will kind of get around that, let's say you want to create a community or a district with a real similar character. You have a tight threshold of lot sizes. You have a tight threshold of maximum building size, maybe even minimum building size. Then things kind of end up looking the same without requiring it. Usually not seen somewhere like Franklin County, that's usually smaller towns or cities. But that one's another one, not necessarily that I've heard here in this county, but can be confusing at times. We have to be careful about how things look. The format of zoning regulations, there are two parts. Whether it's here, Town of Rocky Mount, Roanoke, Northern Virginia, outside of the state, they really come into a two-part deal. Part one is the text, that's your zoning ordinance. Part two is the zoning map. Each parcel is given a designation, or in our case, none at all. So they talk together. You cannot really have one without the other. You wouldn't need a map if you didn't have regulations. And if you're going to have regulations, you need some sort of map showing where each district is. So those are the two parts. Again, part one is your text. This is an exact screenshot from our zoning ordinance online. It will give you, we'll get into the contents, but it might have a section on the processes, how things happen. It'll have a section on each district, what the setbacks are for that district, what uses are allowed, et cetera, et cetera. And then that part two is the map. So in this case, we're going to look at A-one. So you would come to the map and say, okay, great, I'm zoned A-one. And then you'd pop over to the zoning ordinance, and you'd say, all right, this is everything that applies to me in an A-one district. It's often thought that these are one and the same. They are not one and the same. They hold hands, they play together, but they are not the same. You can change the map without changing the text, and you can change the text without changing the map. Changing one does not ever immediately equate to changing the other in any circumstance. Even if you wanted to do it at the same time, it's still two separate processes. They still, both have to have a public hearing through Planning Commission, through Board. It has to be advertised, people have to be notified. So yes, you can do it at the same time, but one action does not bring the other one along with it. They have to be treated separately. The zoning text, the state has some say in how we can write that. A lot of say, particularly about specific things. Again, Code of Virginia, we could go on for hours about that one. It's an absolute rabbit hole. But we have to be really mindful of how we regulate things, and I'll get into that. It's just the state that we live in. States are broken up into Dillon's Rule states or Home Rule states. And we're in the former. So we're in a Dillon's Rule state. So we have to regulate things as the state kind of says we're allowed to. So how the zoning ordinance reads is not necessarily totally up to the locality. It is, but we can't pull things out of thin air. We have to follow some sort of guideline. The zoning map, that part two, more or less is up to you all. It is up to the locality. The state does not dictate what's zoned, what isn't zoned, why something is agriculture, residential. That more or less is up to you all. Any questions about this part? Yeah?
I just have one question that came to mind. Stephanie, on a nonconforming lot, that say the house has a thousand-foot setback, if that house burns down and it's a nonconforming lot, are they allowed to build back on that?
They are. Hurricanes, natural disasters, fires, that kind of thing. Also, a section of code that we have to follow almost word for word. So code has our back in a lot of cases. Some could say it's like a chain, weighs us down a little bit. But so for that exact scenario, there's an entire section of Code of Virginia that says, all right, someone's house got struck by lightning, it's burned to a crisp. They can build back exactly the way it was, as long as they don't enlarge it, so on, so forth.
Same footprint?
Same footprint, more or less.
Thank you.
Or if you just decide to rebuild it, from your own volition, or interior changes, that's up to you. As long as the outside, again, the footprint doesn't get bigger. You would, yeah. So if, let's say, in that scenario, your house is still there. You're done living in it, it's too small, it's too big, whatever, you don't like it, and you want to build a new house. You do have to comply with everything from that point moving forward. So let's say you buy a house today with this current zoning regulation. Your setback is a thousand square feet. Fantastic, excellent. You build your house, it's a thousand square feet back from the road. Two years from now, we have a new zoning ordinance. We update those regulations, and the setback, you know, only has to be five hundred square feet, or five hundred feet from the road. And you're like, wow, I'd really like to be closer to the road, for whatever reason, I want to be up there. You could, but you would have to follow those regulations moving forward. Or let's say Ms. Smith buys a lot, builds a structure. At the time she buys it and builds, you can have a barber shop in your house. Or you can't, we'll do that. You can't have one. Zoning regulations change, she still has that house. Two years later, we change it, suddenly in that district, you can now have a barber shop in your house. She can open one at that point. So the door swings both ways, and there are different sets of regulations for each scenario, whether it's something you want to do, or replace, lesser, or more intense. Does that make sense? Nonconformities are kind of a mess. Okay. Does that answer your question? Okay. All right, Code of, yes?
Can you still get a special use permit to build a barber shop?
If it's nonconforming?
Yes.
No. So let's say you, let's say you, going down rabbit holes right now. Let's say you buy a house, okay? Right now, the zoning regulations say, okay, you can have a barber shop. You dilly-dally, you don't get it done. Two years later, you all change the rules, you can't have it anymore, and you're like, but I want it. You know, I want it, I'm ready now. If it's not a use anymore, special use permit isn't an option. And we'll get into that a little bit. Special use permits aren't like a free get-out-of-jail-free card. It's still, when you get to your uses, and we'll get to this, it's either something that's by right, which we talked about and I'll go back over, or you need that special use permit. That special use permit isn't, again, it's not like a free card for kind of doing anything that's unusual. It's certain circumstances. So when it comes to nonconformities, if you can do something at one point in time, those regulations change, and you cannot do it anymore regardless of what it is. A certain setback, a certain use, and those things change. There's no option moving forward, once those change, to do them again, unless it's existing and your house burnt down and you want to rebuild. Does that help at all? All right, Code of Virginia and zoning regulations. These are very nuanced. Again, this could take a while just to get through this part alone, but I'll hit on a few key things here. Through the Code of Virginia, you would read two words, may and shall. May means we can do it if we want to. When I say we, the board, the locality. Shall means we must do it the exact way that Code of Virginia tells us, we have no leeway. So it's not up for us to decide how to do something, how to regulate something. Most of Code of Virginia is shall, more or less. But there are some mayes in there. The big may is zoning. It doesn't say that anyone has to have it. We all do, for the most part. Some in the southwest part of Virginia, there are, of course, localities that don't have it. But the Code of Virginia says, any locality may, by ordinance, create zoning regulations for all or a portion, which goes back to how we kind of ended up with the split deal here. We're not the only ones. There are localities, again, that have no zoning. Some provisions are optional. Again, this is that may. We can do it if we want to, we're not required. This is less common. A couple of examples. Code of Virginia does not require localities to offer special exceptions. These are similar to special use permits, for all intents and purposes of today. It doesn't say we have to account for those, but we can if we want to. It also says we can, if we want to, include some affordable dwelling unit regulations in there. Kind of touched on those earlier. It's kind of like an incentive. Again, it's not requiring that we do that. We can if we want to. To make things a little more confusing, there are Code of Virginia sections, regulations, that some localities are required to do based on their size. This is more common out in the Northern Virginia area, outside of Richmond. So just be aware of that. Doesn't affect us here, I don't think there are any that are specific to us, or that we have to do based on size, or anything like that. But it is out there. And then, some provisions are mandatory. This is that shall, and this is much more common. Two easy examples. Manufactured homes are permitted in all agricultural districts. We cannot say otherwise. It is Code of Virginia that in all of our agriculture districts, whether we have just the one we have, A-one, or A-one, two, three, through seven, all of those must allow manufactured homes by right.
What if they got that homeowners association?
That's another, that's another one of those things. That one, I would say Jim Gwynn could answer if he were here. Because I don't know how it would get to where it's something dictated by code. I mean, we wouldn't get in the middle of that. I don't know if that's ever happened and what someone has done. I'm sure it's out there. Honestly, I wouldn't be surprised if we don't have subdivisions here in this county that say you cannot have them, and it's probably zoned A-one. I don't know off the top of my head. But that would certainly be a conversation, if you were the property owner in your HOA, to sit down with some attorneys, and see which one kind of rises to the top on that one. The other example here, group homes. Those must be permitted in all districts where single-family dwellings are permitted. Group homes are homes for adults that need care or one-on-one living situations, not halfway houses, or drug-related, mental disabilities, those sorts of things. So Code of Virginia says, anywhere, regardless of the district, where we allow single-family dwellings, group homes must also be allowed as a by-right use. So those are some two easy ones, just to show the stark difference. There's a lot of shals and a handful of mayes. So we have to be really careful about how we word things, what we're allowing, what we're not allowing, based on what code says. Any questions about everything I've touched on so far? So code, without putting on an attorney's hat that I didn't earn, and then the format of zoning regulations, how they're kind of laid out. Anything? Okay.
Anyone?
I'm going to take a sip of water.
Good, you're doing good.
Okay, good. We might leave by supper time. Okay. The next topic is what's in a zoning ordinance. So when I'm talking about this, this is the text. This is the document, if you were to get it out on paper. All of the slides I'm about to go over are going to be a thirty-thousand-foot view on this. There could be more. It could be more detailed than I'm describing to you now, but just for the sake of today, learning that 101, we're going to go really high on this. So district and district standards. These are your zoning districts. Your base and your overlay, that's more or less, just about anywhere you go, that's kind of what they're called. Your base districts are your normal, your run-of-the-mill, residential, agriculture, commercial, industrial. Those are kind of laid out on the map. We have one agriculture district right now, five residentials, three commercial districts. We call them business, or two, I should say. Three industrial districts. One of those three industrial districts is actually Summit View, but I lumped it into this. We have a zoning district that really came forward for that. And then two planned development districts, your RPD and your PCD. I think everyone up here has had some work with that. Your base districts will typically include some site standards. Your setbacks for that district, how far in your property has to be from the property lines, how tall your building can be. Sometimes it might be lot coverage. You know, you can only cover fifty percent of your lot. This is, that's typically more common in cities, where it's maybe a little bit more dense, or commercial districts. But just to give you some examples of typically what's in this sort of thing, minimum lot size. A lot of localities will break out minimum lot size. It's not just a free-for-all, minimum lot size of one acre all throughout ag. It might be broken down based on public water sewer, if you're on a well. That's not uncommon. Your overlay districts get a little bit confusing. But if this is your base, right, this is all of your residential, your commercial, your industrial, your overlay districts kind of just sit on top. And they either add extra regulations, or kind of take over what's underneath that base. So for example, we have six overlays right now. Three for the two-twenty North Corridor, that follow the two-twenty North DGA. The West Lake Hales Ford overlay, we have one for West Lake Hales Ford. It's a little bit smaller than the DGA. But a quick example to show you how an overlay works, we'll take the West Lake overlay. You have your base district that says, okay, commercial, residential, so on, so forth. That overlay is on top of it, a quick one that comes out of that overlay in West Lake, sidewalks are required. So you have that base regulation, you know, that's across the board, and then you have your overlay on top of it that just adds an extra layer to it. So kind of like a sundae, and you add something on the top. So kind of like a sundae and you add something on the top of it. There can be lots of different overlays. A lot of people will put floodplain regulations as an overlay. Um, historic districts, development districts. Um, so all of ours are more or less development areas. It's the Westlake area. Um, we have one, pardon me. We have one, um, I can't remember what it's called, corridor overlay. It more or less along 40, 122, 116, and 220 in the zoned areas require a certain type of signage, extra signage requirements. So overlays are just extra. They add a little extra something. Um, and it's based, based on character or history or, or some resource or, um, drive as to why things would be different there. Does that make sense, the difference between base districts and overlays? Okay. Um, the next grouping of, of articles or contents that you would see in a zoning ordinance are uses, supplementary regulations, and definitions. Uses are exactly what they sound like. You're very familiar with these. Um, that's, that's what you can do on that land. Um, they're typically grouped into like category. You have some residential uses, just like your districts, commercial uses, industrial uses. You might have some miscellaneous uses. Um, an example would be like an accessory structure. You could have a commercial business and have an accessory structure, or you could have a residential home and have a, uh, an accessory structure. So this, this little Excel chart right here, our current ordinance is very specific in its uses and it's listed in, in a list format. Um, I think I have a picture of it, actually. So here, if you go to our ordinance right now and you go to any of the districts, it's gonna give you a section called permitted uses and they're laid out one by one. It's very difficult to read if you, A, never read an ordinance before. Um, or if you're very versed in ordinance and you're a developer and you say, "I want to build, um, an ice cream parlor. What district can I do that in?" You would have to go to all of those different sections versus just going to a quick chart. Um, so I put ours in chart form just for myself, so I'm gonna show you the way ours is written out now. Um, more and more zoning ordinances are putting it in this format. So for example, when we're talking about uses and how they're, they're allowed, that's that by right or that special use permit. So we'll take single-family detached. That, where are you? Hold on. Okay. Single-family detached. That's, that's a grouping. See all of these? Those are all different specific uses outlined in our ordinance. Um, it's really cumbersome and it's quite frankly unnecessary. There's home, single-family, and home, single-family detached dwelling. Absolutely no reason on earth to have two of them. Um, this is just what happens when things get old and they don't get, um, refined with, with a close eye over time. I, I think I talked about this last month. That's no one's fault. It just happens with zoning ordinances. They get outdated. Um, but when we go back, the last couple of times I've come to you all and said our ordinance is really overdue for a really good, just a really good redo, this is a really good example of that. So when we're talking about uses, this is what we're saying. The, the literal use spelled out and whether it's allowed somewhere or it's not allowed somewhere. Um, paired up with this usually in a good ordinance are what are called supplemental standards. Um, these are more effective in bolstering up by right uses, um, but they can be used for anything. So we'll use this list that I have right here. This is from our ordinance. This is a, a short list. This isn't all of them. This is a quick screenshot. So these are uses that, again, are either allowed by right or they're, and we'll get into what that means, by right versus not by right. They're allowed by right or by special use permit. And they, for one reason or another, might require some special attention. They are noisy, they're loud, um, they, sorry, someone's calling me. They, um, bring a lot of traffic, et cetera, et cetera. So there are lots of different reasons why something might warrant, not necessarily, it's not so intense that it needs a special use permit, but it might need a few other safeguards built into the zoning ordinance. So this is where your supplementary standards can be really, really helpful. What they ultimately end up doing is all of those conditions that you would maybe put on a special use permit. Instead of doing that over and over again, slap them in here and then they apply every time to that use. And you no longer have to require that as a special use permit, but you still get all of those little nuances met that you might be worried about. Again, the noise, the parking, the traffic, et cetera. Um, so supplementary regulations, um, for one use could be one or two things, for another use it could be 10 or 12. Um, all kinds of different things. I've written ordinances where there's been maybe 10. I've written some where there's been 50. Um, so it just kind of depends on, um, how much safeguarding you want in an ordinance, how proactive you want to be, and, and kind of the history. If you see something a lot coming to you all discretionary, um, maybe it's something that you build into here because you know, time and again, these are the things we're looking for, build it in as a, as a baseline. This is, you know, foundation of this use is this, these are the things we're expecting. So that's how supplemental standards work. You won't have them for every use. They're just not necessary for everything. Um, and then the last piece of this one is definitions. It is absolutely imperative, she's probably gonna laugh. Every single use really needs to be defined. Um, ours right now doesn't define every single use. Your definition should also include other things. As, almost silly as it seems, lot, that needs to be defined. Parcel needs to be defined. Divide needs to be defined. Almost every term that you would maybe use, again, for someone that's their first time with a zoning ordinance or, um, it's different than what they were used to in Wisconsin. You kind of want to just define anything that might raise a question mark for someone, so. But uses are really, really important to define because what is, I don't know why I'm hung up on barber shops. I've never been in one in my life, but we'll go with that again. Um, this is a poor example, but to someone, you know, to me, a barber shop may be one thing, but to Ms. Smith, it might be something different. So it's really important that you define in your ordinance, when we say barber shop, coffee shop, small-scale commercial, short-term rental, what exactly it is that we mean by that use. Any questions about uses?
I've got a question. If we, and this is updated and updated properly, and I know you all will, especially if we, uh, visit and have ordinances in there that we, we keep getting meetings on. Cut out some of that?
Yes.
If it's, then it can come into y'all's office.
Yes.
And you can say, well, this is what the board has said.
Mm-hmm.
And if it meets A, B, or C.
Yep.
You can-
That's exactly how it would work. So that's kind of how these supplementary regulations work. You would have uses that you see a lot of, um, or that you see all the time. And beyond that, if you see that almost every time you're hearing them, you're putting those same conditions on it, then they're really not unique at that point. Um, as a use, they might be unique, but each individual case so much is not unique. So yes, exactly. That's how these work. So if you take a use, say, you can make water bottles, but you have to close, you know, you're in a residential neighborhood, so no loud noise by 10 or, um, you can only park eight cars, no outside employees, whatever the conditions are. If you just build those into here, it no longer has to be a special use permit, which cuts out your time, planning commission, site visits, staff reports, pocket, pocket money from that, from that, um, resident. Um, they pay for the application. They pay for the notification and the papers. Um, so it has benefits. Of course, there are uses you would want to keep as a special use permit that truly are case by case. Um, but it just ends up happening over time that, that localities will have a use that they see time and again as a special use permit and they're really not unique. So if you build those in, um, it can be beneficial.
Mr. Carter?
I have a question, Stephanie. If, off the top of your head, could you cite three things that you think could be taken away from us that you all could do in-house that would streamline some of these special use hearings we have?
Off the top of my head, just as a quick conversation starter, I'm gonna make all the disclaimers necessary. Things take more conversation, but what, and I'll let Lisa speak more because she's at these more often than I am. Um, we don't call them this, but that's what they are, accessory dwelling units. We call them something else, home, single-family dwelling, something second, it's nonsense. Uh, more or less, and it's, it's an accessory dwelling unit. You see those a lot. I think that, short-term rentals and outdoor storage, what is it called?
Outdoor storage for business.
Outdoor storage for business, for outdoor display. Thank you.
Outdoor storage.
Outdoor display, those three, I know in the year and a half that I've been here, you've seen countless times. And anecdotal, just me, a lot of those probably have very similar conditions. Those are three examples of ones that maybe you could build in as these supplementary regulations instead. And then to Mr. Thompson's point, that would become a, an administrative sort of signing of the paper, if you will, instead of coming in more or less asking for permission.
Well, for myself and the rest of the board, I would like to see, and you all are gonna get this all together and bring it back to us. I would like to see those three things put in here for us to talk about.
Absolutely.
And maybe-
To me, that's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
When the, so when the, we'll kind of diverge for one second. Um, when the zoning ordinance update starts, so the big project to update the zoning ordinance, when that consultant comes on board, the first sort of thing that they'll do is they'll have a joint meeting with you and the planning commission. And they'll come here and they'll sit both of you down and say, sort of, this is the process, kind of what I've done a couple of times with that scope of work. This is the process. These are, these are the outcomes. And they'll ask you, what's concerning you? What do you want changed? What, what's kind of on your mind? That would be a first place to tell them. Um, we have a pulse, you know, on what you all are feeling, certainly after days like this, where we can make a note of it and bring it up to them. Uh, but that'll be a chance. And then the, your planning commissioners, so the way that this process will go, art, not article by article, but groupings of articles. Every other month, that consultant will be sitting down with the planning commission to more or less go through this new ordinance bit by bit. Um, so talk to your planning commissioners. If there's something, because you won't be in front of that consultant after that, you know, opening of the gate at the beginning, you won't be in front of them as often as your planning commissioners. But I would express anything you have sort of top of mind with them when we start. But then talk to your planning commissioners and make sure that you all are communicating for anything. Um, I'm looking at you like you have zoning down there, but if you have anything on your mind, let them know. Um, speak to them about it so that that way they can also bring it up when they're in the trenches, if you will, going through those art articles. But you will have a chance to tell the, the consultant kind of what's on your forefront of your mind.
Guess one other thing that, and it's Ms. Smith's district, where these people are buying these utility sheds and converting them into homes. I don't know if that can be addressed. Is there's anything we can do about that in the code, but?
Um, that one I won't get into because I'm not Jim Gwynn. And I, there, there might be some other layers to that. But we have to be careful about, and I'm probably getting into things I shouldn't. I'm not the building official and I don't know building code. But the way that building code reads in a nutshell, as long as something can meet building code, it's a stick-built home. Um, so if you have those containers and it's remedied or renovated or ho, ho, bolstered up in some way that meets that building code, I'm not sure if there's anything that we can do through zoning. But I'm not a lawyer. I don't want to sit up here and say right now that there is, but that's, if it's a topic of concern and of conversation, I think it's something that we could have, maybe we should have the attorneys look at. Um, I just, I, we want to be careful to build that in if it's not something, going back to the design, it's a similar sort of acorn. Telling someone what material to use can be a very slippery slope and I don't know if we have that authority in the zoning ordinance.
Not to get in the weeds too far, and we're just having a conversation here. Could we as a board, with the help of the building department, change the building codes and maybe come up with a way to control that?
I don't know. Um, I know we, we use international building code, which the state of Virginia does. I don't know if you kind of adopt that as your, this is your method to use. I don't know if you can, okay, we're gonna use that, but we're gonna switch a few things. I don't know how that works. That would be a good question for John. Um, I don't know if you know, but-
Stephanie?
Yeah.
The attorney's on, on, on the line.
Oh, okay.
And if it's a gen, if it's a general lies, you know, we, we, in our meetings, that if it's specific, we have to go in closed session. But if it's a general line and, uh, Mr. Gwynn is comfortable with answering it in public, he is online if we need him.
Mr. Gwynn, did you catch all that?
I did.
Do you have any thoughts?
Um, you know, my gut reaction is there ought to be a way to do it. But if you're gonna ask me today specifically, um, I, I would tell you, I probably need to go back and review some areas of the code. I mean, one of the things that just comes to mind is maybe we could have some sort of minimum, you know, requi, minimum square footage requirement for habitation. Um, I, I don't, I don't know that that would be, of course, then you get into all the tiny homes and all that too, so. Uh, uh, you know, I think there's probably a way to do it. Um, but to be able to tell you right now, I, you know, my, my request would be, give me some time and let me, uh, look at it. Maybe I can get back to you next week.
Hey, Jim, it's Lori. Um, would you agree that part of the conversation to simplify this would be what zoning classifications, where we would, this would be an allowable by right use? And then trying to, um, work it, you know, specifically around building code and, and all of that. But just kind of deciding where you want these and where you don't.
Yeah, but I, it'll be, uh, and that goes back to whether or not we can legislate how large a, a habit, you know, a habitat or a house can be. Uh, because I think you could put, again, uh, Stephanie and I, Stephanie and I would probably have to sit down and work through it. But we might be able to come up with zoning classifications or regulations that say in this particular class, you can have homes of any size, but in this class, they've gotta be, say, you know, 800 or 1,000 square feet, you know, or more. I, you know. Uh, but, and, and the thing with the building code that's gonna be interesting is generally we adopt, you know, localities adopt the state building code intact. Uh, now they, you know, we've gotten, I've, I've kind of gotten waist-deep in this in another jurisdiction because, uh, they've got the maintenance code, but then the maintenance code was broken out and was it actually adopted when you adopted the whole thing? It was part of it. Um, so we would have to look at it to see, uh, whether or not we can, uh, adopt parts of it. Um, and we don't want to jeopardize not having all of it. Uh, so we, you know, we gotta make sure that we do that as well. But again, uh, look, if, if it's something that the board wants us to do, we certainly can sit down and work on figuring out a way to get this, uh, uh, under control because I think it's a, I mean, just from looking at the pictures at the meeting and all that, I mean, I, this is an issue. Uh, it's definitely an issue.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Anything else on?
Anything? Does that bring up any more questions for Stephanie or Jim?
Okay. All right. I think we finished up here, but sometimes there's just no telling. I think we're done there. Okay. Next bucket that might be in your zoning ordinance is enforcement, um, which is another big one. I know it's been top of, topic of conversation for us recently, but certainly important in any zoning ordinance. Um, so this will include provisions on how to enforce the regulations that you have in that zoning ordinance, what kind of violations you have, what penalties, if any, what those fines are attached to them. Um, this goes back, I know, surprise, surprise, Code of Virginia kind of tells us how we can go about things. Um, there are maximum and minimum penalties that we kind of want to stay aligned with. For example, the penalties that we have in our ordinance are lower than what state code allows. Um, it's typically a good idea to, to at least align with them. Um, you have a, it's, it's harder for someone to feel okay with violating a regulation if it only cost them $10. It's a little harder for that person to make that decision if it's gonna cost them 500 or, you know, just as an example. Um, so this section will have the process, the outline of how violations are handled. Um, and then again, what, what your penalties are. I just wanted to show you this mess here, just for anyone that hasn't gone through it or isn't familiar with it. This is in a nutshell. It's a little bit more nuanced, of course, when you get down to it. But this is our current process, the string of events here for violations. But this is our current process, the string of events here for violations. So we have a complaint come in. Um, we are complaint-only basis. Most localities are, most rural localities are regardless of size. It just comes down to a manpower issue. Um, so we have, let's say, a complaint comes in. Um, we make a code case for it, staff does that, kind of gets the ball rolling. Someone goes out to inspect it. Um, they say, all right, I didn't find a violation. We'll go back to that grass clipping scenario. It's just really tall grass. Good for the butterflies, bad for the neighbors. Case closed, nothing you can do. So then, let's, come on, let's say it's not that way and there is a violation of some sort. They have a building they're not supposed to have, they're operating a use they're not supposed to be doing, whatever it is. Uh, violation, they find a violation on that inspection. Maybe a notice of violation will go out, and Lisa, if I'm wrong here, correct me.
No, we do a courtesy letter.
Courtesy, okay. So before this first letter of violation, there's a, there's basically three letters, lots of chances. A courtesy letter will go out and say, hey, you know, we saw this thing and it's violation, so remedy it, please. If they don't do that, another, go ahead.
It's all sent out by certified mail, so we can prove that.
It's all certified or just the?
The violations are certified and the notice to enforce is certified, but the first courtesy letter is just regular mail.
How do you know whether they got it or not?
Sorry.
Oh, that's right. The first courtesy letter is just regular mail. We're saying, we think you have a violation. Please give us a call in the next fifteen days so that we can talk about it. So we hope they get it. If not, they automatically in fifteen days get a notice of violation. Well, we go check and make sure they haven't cleaned up, and then we send them the notice of violation. And that one's sent certified in regular mail.
It is sent certified at that time.
Mm-hmm, it is. The next three letters are sent, um, certified.
If it's not sent out certified, there's no way to prove that they got it.
No, there's not, but it's always been, um, the county's policy that your initial, your written initial getting to in touch with the property owner is, is a courtesy letter. Instead of sending them the harsh violation letter first.
I'm going to pop in for a second. So going back to that Code of Virginia, code doesn't require we send a courtesy. It just kind of starts with that notice of violation. Um, so I hope this doesn't sound wrong. We're kind of doing them a favor. That courtesy letter could be sent certified. They may not be getting it, but we're also not required to do it. It's kind of out of good faith. Hey, before we really start that process where there's no turning back, we're just letting you know. Um, so if the board wishes that we, you know, start doing it certified, that's certainly something we can put out in our regulations, will want to, so that when Lisa is retired and living in Florida and there's a new zoning administrator, they know what's expected and the process that they have to follow. Um, but for now, it's just that first notice of violation, that real official letter, the second one, and then the final. Um, but code only requires that we send out three is what I'm saying. We send four.
Well, for my part, I got no problem with, you know, but when it's what code, it needs to be certified.
And also, just as a reminder to keep in mind, that each of them have fifteen days to come into compliance. So the courtesy letter has fifteen days to come into compliance. Then the notice of violation has fifteen days. The second notice of violation has fifteen days. And the reason why those two have fifteen days is because you, as the person getting the letter, you can appeal the zoning administrator's decision in those thirty days. And it would go to the, um, Board of Zoning Appeals. And then the last letter is notice of enforcement. That means we're giving you another fifteen days. If you don't do something, then you will end up in court.
I understand all that.
Okay.
You don't understand what I'm putting in. If you can't prove they got that letter, period, then the fifteen days does not start. It doesn't mean nothing.
Right, and we have, um, in some cases, when we know they're not getting the certified letter, we have had deputies delivering.
Mr. Jim, if I just quick question.
Sure.
On the penalty side of this, and Jim, you're on the line.
Yeah.
Once we get to a point where, um, the county attorney would take a case to court, um, with non-compliance upon two violation letters, is it, would the assertion be that, where Stephanie has made the comment, that our penalties articulated in our code, um, should align with state code penalties as a Dillon's rule state? If, and, and I think in our case, many of ours don't align with state code. So when the judge gets it and adjudicates the case, is he adjudicating on the state code or the county ordinance?
Well, well, the assumption is that the county ordinance is consistent with the state code. But as far as the fine is concerned, uh, if we have elected to, uh, enact fines that are different from the state, they can't be above the state, but if we've elected to go below them, then the judge is only going to enforce our, our ordinance. It's not going to give us the benefit of the state statute.
That's the point I'm making, is I think during this process, we need to be astute to the fact that where we are not in, um, where we're not aligned with the state code, we need to understand where there's areas are and how much we're out of alignment. Because when these cases get adjudicated, um, the state code, I would presume, in many cases, is going to be a fair, objective standard as it relates to fines and penalties. And if we are under those, um, that's something I think we need to, to look at as part of our review.
I agree. I think we ought to be right in line with the state.
Going back to what we were talking about earlier, when you have that kickoff meeting with the consultant, I would, I would express this. But working with them, I know this to be true, that's one of their big things, is to go through and at the very least, get you up to code. Um, so chances are there, even if you all didn't ask or recommend it, they would probably suggest, hey, we've noticed your, your this, that, or the other is out of line with code, or it's lesser than code, we would recommend getting it in line. Um, so they, ninety-nine point nine percent sure they will approach that, you know, um, anyway. But certainly bring it up with them if you feel like you need to. Um, and that's something that staff also would tell them. We want, you know, not necessarily these fines, that's up to you all, but as far as, you know, code says we have to do one thing and we're doing the opposite, those are a given. Um, those things need to be remedied. But I would certainly bring this up with them, so that way they know where your direction is and kind of what your feel for things and your appetite is for change. Um, so make sure that they know that, but, um, it will happen by default.
Jim, your, your thoughts on that? Don't you think that everything should be consistent, or your thoughts?
Oh, yeah. It would make it, it'd make our lives much easier. Um, and it, and it would, frankly, it'd make the judges' life more easy, because they, they would know that we're all talking about the state code, we're only talking about one set of, uh, fines.
Yes, sir. Mr. Sandy?
Yeah, Jim, do you, uh, you may not be able to see her slide, but she talks about civil penalties. And maybe you can touch on that just a minute. Is, uh, do you feel that gives us much more flexibility when it comes to enforcement?
Well, yeah, uh, because, uh, as we learned, what was it, maybe two years ago, Steve, uh, if somebody's out of state and, and the only thing we have are criminal penalties, we have to extradite them to get them back to court. And we're not going to, I mean, you know, that's not going to happen. Um, so putting civil penalties in is, uh, definitely, uh, the way to go. I mean, I don't think we're gonna, I mean, it's nice to have both, I guess. Um, but, you know, the chances of a judge putting somebody in jail for his zoning violation are pretty slim. Uh, usually it's going to be, they're going to put them in jail because they're in contempt because he's ordered them or she's ordered them to make the change and they didn't do it. And then they find themselves, uh, on the wrong side of the judge from a contempt standpoint.
That's cool.
Thank you. Anything else on this one?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, okay, last little chunk, if you will, these are the leftover bits, not that they're not important, but, um, all those other little things that might be in your zoning ordinance, um, development standards. We touched on this a little bit. Your parking, landscaping, signage, outdoor lighting. This is often referred to as like community character. It's, it's sort of setting an image, if you will. Um, minimum parking standards. You need X amount for each type of use, depending on the intensity. Um, landscaping, whether that's parking lot landscaping for, for tree canopy to reduce heat, heat island effect, or aesthetics, or it's a buffer between incompatible uses or against a roadway. Signage is pretty obvious. Um, and again, when we talk about signage regulations, we're saying how big the sign can be. Um, if it's lit, if it's not lit, if it is light, lit, how, how bright it can be. Um, outdoor lighting is similar. Um, I'm, the term is escaping me right now. Foot candles? Thank you. Foot candles. Um, so how bright something is, if it's downcast or not, dark sky compliant. Um, so when we talk about outdoor lighting, that's what we're talking about typically, or almost in every case. Homes are, are exempt. You at your home can, you know, put up whatever lighting you want, for the most part. There's probably an exception to that statement, but I'm generalizing. So when we talk about outdoor lighting, we're talking about, uh, commercial, industrial, public, civic uses, not someone's home. The other big part of a zoning ordinance, of course, are the procedures. Um, I don't go into great detail here, um, but, but what, when we talk about procedures, we're saying there's a section that will outline what's required in a site plan, who's, who's approving that. Um, who, what the process is for special use permit, public hearings, when it goes, et cetera, et cetera. Um, same for variances and appeals, um, amendments, whether that's a text amendment, which we're going to get into, or a map amendment. Um, and then lastly, another big piece of a zoning ordinance is those non-conformities. I hate to like open this terrible can of worms again, um, but that's another big section, rel- relies really, really heavily on state code. If you, with, I'm going to make a statement, but with the assumption that they're all up-to-date ordinances. If you go to just about any locality's ordinance, if it's up-to-date and you read their non-conforming section, chances are it reads very, very similar, if not identical. Um, they're just one of those things, we don't have a lot of wiggle room. Um, so it should be treated pretty much the same everywhere you go within the state of Virginia. And again, you have uses that can be non-conforming. Um, so maybe you're operating that barber shop now, but you can't later if you close it. Structures, so a physical building that maybe was allowed but isn't now, or vice versa, or lots. And when we talk about lots, um, let's say that Ms. Smith has a lot. I'm picking on you because you're all the way to the left. Let's say you have a, a lot and you buy it, um, and you want to subdivide it, okay? And the current regulations require a minimum lot size of an acre. So she subdivides it, that new one is an acre, all is well. You all change those zoning regulations a year later and the new minimum lot size is now two acres. That lot that she made is non-conforming. Um, so that's what a non-conforming lot means. It's actually the lot or the parcel of land itself. And usually it becomes non-conforming again because of setbacks, um, lot size, so on, so forth. Any questions about what's in a zoning ordinance? And I'm happy to flip back through if you need me to. So you have your districts, whether it's your normal base districts, residential, commercial, et cetera. Your overlays, the ones that kind of add on that special layer. You have all that. You have your uses and maybe those supplementary standards that we talked about, the ever-important definitions. You might have a section on enforcement. And then you'll have all those other bits and pieces all throughout the ordinance. Any questions about what's in it?
Stephanie, just one point, and you may get to this, so if I'm jumping ahead, tell me. One thing I've heard this board inquire about is what changes with a change in property when the property sells, is transferred with respect to what it's currently zoned, what the current uses are versus what the transfer of real estate, what does that do to the property or not do?
Okay, I don't have it built in, so we'll just jump into that now before I forget to go back to it.
This a good place to take five?
Yeah, we can take five.
Let's take a five-minute break, ten-minute break and come back, okay?
And I'd say for everyone that's kind of itching, we're, we're probably more than halfway through, so stay with me.
Cool. Thank you.
Ms. Stephanie.
All right, so before we.
Excuse me. I have a question. I don't know if we can cover it or not.
Okay.
Back there on the lighting and landscaping part of that thing, is there any exceptions to that at all?
If it's.
A business, anything like that?
I don't know how ours reads off the top of my head. Um, do we have any exceptions?
Aren't the overlays, don't the overlays have the exceptions articulated?
I think one of the overlays has an exception that I can make. Um, a certain exception, but the regular landscape, I can look real quick. I don't usually do waivers unless it's like extraordinary different than any other property.
We used to do before, we done a pile of, uh, parking lot lane, and one thing comes, you, you, trees grow up, just like that.
Yeah, yeah.
And owners have got to go back and continue to cut them. The big thing that, that gets me though is like, uh, take midpoint out here. Their business is lighting up their product, you know, and selling it, you know. They don't want trees blocking it and all that good stuff. So it's something I think we need to look at and keep in mind.
Yeah, I think that's another thing. So if you all don't mind some homework, before you leave today, before it escapes your mind, write down some of these things that you're asking about. And then the consultant, when they're going to write our ordinances, they can look at other localities kind of like us and see, what are they exempting, what are they not, what exceptions do they include, that kind of thing, just before it leaves your brain and, you know, it's not on your mind anymore. So write those things down and bring them up. But Lisa will look and see if we have anything in there, um, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Some of them are all strict. I know, uh, Roanoke County, it's in Roanoke County. They would have, uh, you know, they submit the plans to the building department and all like that, they get approved. Anything that changed, it even came down to moving a shrub in a parking lot, five foot. They had to go back and redo the writing and resubmit all the way. It seems ridiculous.
Yeah, no, Lisa just said, we're not that, that strict.
I think architectural standards are really what we're all talking about.
Okay.
Right, I mean, I think that, Marshall, I think that's what you're kind of talking about is, you know, but I think architectural standards have gotten to be that slippery slope statutorily.
I think so, and I, I mean, maybe Mr. Gwynn would say, I'm not, again, not the attorney here, but it's been my experience in the years that I've been doing this to be, tread very lightly with that. Um, again, unless it's in that overlay or it's really crystal clear that you have the, the authority to be doing it. But just to kind of do it for any regular business in any old district, um, I think more and more, yeah. He's, he probably knows case law or some precedent that's out there that's happening. But, yeah, I think we're all learning that we need to be a bit more careful about it.
That's what, what, what they're just talking about to me. That would be important. If I had like a car lot down there, I wouldn't want a bunch of trees out there blocking my lot. I don't want to see, people see my product.
That's their business.
And then, and then another thing that just come to my mind when, uh, you, you guys were talking about, another reason that we need to get this stuff in writing, because I'm concerned of what pressure that we're putting on staff when they can say that, you know, Lisa said a while ago, you know, I, I can do this or I can do that. And if somebody comes in and does that, that puts pressure on staff that I think is unnecessary.
Which I'll, I'll get to that a little bit, actually.
You want to come to that?
A little bit, a little bit.
Oh, shut up.
No, it's okay. Um, not, nothing too crazy, but I will touch on it a bit. But before we keep going, any other questions about lighting or anything we've covered so far? Okay, to answer Ms. Smith's question before we took a break, typically in most cases, a zoning classification, residential, commercial, R1, R2, A1, will run with the land. Just like special use permits, it runs with the land. I'll give it over to Mr. Gwynn if he wants to add to that. There may be some caveat or some really special circumstance where it wouldn't. But more or less, selling your property does not mean that the zoning district changes. Again, that goes back, you have to go through the public hearings and notify, notify, notify the neighbors and do the postings.
And Stephanie, more or less, that there's been a lot of confusion I've witnessed over time where, as an example, we do the zoning ordinance update. And let's say that we changed, we, we work with the residential, R1, 2, 3, and maybe that, the, the verbiage changes. And so when a property sells, and it's R1 as an example, but now it's really R2 under the new classification, the question then has come up, does it go to R2 with the sale of the property, or does it always stay R1?
It will stay R1 until that property owner or the board, again, kind of like we talked about the last time, until one part, party or another goes through that process to rezone that property, which is called a math amendment. goes through that process to rezone that property, which is called a math amendment, which we'll get to. So again, selling it doesn't do anything.
That's something that we're going to have to drive home, that the residents are probably, that's one of the reasons the residents get very upset when we start talking about the zoning word. And you're going to take away my zoning, you're going to take especially R1, um, not R1, A1, excuse me. But we're going to have to be very, very clear about what we're doing and what it means and doesn't mean. Because they're going to think, just like the example I articulated, that I would no longer be R1, I would really be R2. So if I sell my house to my daughter, is she now R2? And if she's not, you know, but then again, I look at what is the, what is the functionality of doing a zoning rewrite if everything's going to stay the same?
It's it's not that everything, um, I don't have a good answer.
By classification.
It's just going back to that, it's two processes. So it's not that one is more important than the other, or, um, they're just different. It's kind of like if I want fruit salad, and you're going to have apples and you're going to have blueberries. Someone may say, okay, well, you're just going to have fruit salad, it's all fruit salad. It's like, okay, but what are you putting in it? They're still separate. So they're both important in their own right. Um, and so sure, I'm sure, you know, that is a good question. If you're going to do the job, do the job, but then it kind of goes back to that, well, it's a slippery slope for a for a board to come in. Typically speaking, it's not my opinion necessarily, but just what we see throughout the state. You don't often see someone, a board, taking a zoning map and kind of taking the eraser out and redoing it similarly to how they did when you introduced zoning.
So as an example, a major problem that that I spend a lot of time on, I'll have an A1 parcel in an R1 neighborhood. So this process is not going to attempt to correct that, am I?
Not, not on its face.
Okay.
Um, not on its face. It, the way that you, and I'm probably going to be confusing, this milkshake is coming out. You could change regulations, and it may look and feel different moving forward, but that until you change that map, until you go through that process, you pay the fee, you do the application, you post it in the paper, you go to the plan, the public hearing with the planning commission, and you come to the public hearing with the board, it's still that, just like it is now. Um, we'll we'll get to this too. Boxwood Green is the most recent example of a big one. That whole neighborhood came together and said, we're zoned A1, we're a true blue subdivision, we want to be a residential district. And so they did the due diligence to get, you know, the legal go ahead within their HOA. Um, and they, as a neighborhood, rezoned. You could do that now, anyone.
With Idlewood too.
Exactly, Idlewood Shores, yep, you can, people can do that now, whether it's an entire neighborhood or or just one property. Um, I can't think of one off the top of my head, but I know in the last year and a half that I've been here, one individual person has come to rezone something. I can't think of it, um, let's say it's. What about that Aspire, did they rezone?
Yes.
Remember that old farmhouse in Burnt Chimney? Across from the school, this was maybe last summer. It was an old house, he came to rezone that property so that he could run his business out of it, same thing. So whether it's one person, or it's a whole neighborhood, it's the same exact process and it's the same premise. Um, is it a longer process? Sure. What'd you say?
Old Robinson Place.
The White House?
Yeah, the Old Robinson Place.
Yes, I think so, yeah, I don't know all the nicknames.
But back to, back to what Lori was saying there on, um, what am I, okay, so you used Boxwood Greens for an example. So that whole subdivision was A1?
Mm-hmm.
In order for them to, and they wanted to change it and become R1, did everyone in that subdivision go along with that?
No, there were some no's, but it was a majority, and I'm going to give it to Jim Gwyn to explain a little bit further. I don't know if that's the law in general, or if that was in their HOA rules in order to change anything, it had to be majority. I don't know how that worked out from that side of things, but they had a majority, not everyone in there agreed to.
I remember us talking about that, so, but, and we were talking about earlier about the difference between HOA and zoning ordinances. So by them having that majority with their HOA, were they able to change the zoning on the on the naysayers?
Yes, the whole, all of it changed.
And I think, Steve, doesn't our ordinance?
Didn't it? Well, yes, the board changed it.
But doesn't our ordinance specify a percentage? I thought it did.
No.
Well, now this might be a question for Jim, and he may not be comfortable doing, but a while ago, you was talking about by right, that you could do it because you didn't have to change designation because you were more or less, I think, uh, an old term is grandfathered in. How did they, how did they have to go into conformity with the other? How's that fair?
I'm a little bit confused, will you ask it again?
Well, if I, if I understood correctly, the whole, you just said the whole subdivision changed from A1 to R1.
Mm-hmm.
But there were some people that didn't want to. How can you make them change if they didn't want to, if before they said that they were like grandfathered in?
Um, this wouldn't be a case of nonconformities. I'm going to give this one to Jim and see if he could answer it. I don't, I don't know that side of things, how as an HOA or a, um, legitimized organization of a neighborhood, how you have that right? Are you still on the phone?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, will you take this one for me, please?
Although if I had realized this is what was coming, I would have certainly, uh, opened it.
Sorry about that, buddy.
Uh, you know what? So, um, oh gosh, I've suddenly had a relapse, I can't talk anymore with my COVID. No, um, the, so as I recall how we did that, there was, there were two neighborhoods that had the same thing going on. And the first one, uh, everybody was unanimous, and they said, yeah, we all want to change. And so that wasn't a problem. In the second one, we were concerned because there wasn't necessarily unanimity among the group and and basically that was a change that arose, help me, Lisa, out of the planning commission, if I'm not mistaken. It was proposed by the planning commission, uh, and the, keep in mind that even though these folks were rezoned from A1 to to R1, those, frankly, all of them, but especially those that didn't want to go from A1 to R1, were still grandfathered in for A1 uses as long as they can, they contend, they they maintained the nonconforming status. So they would have had the, what is it, two years that you gotta, uh, maintain something for it to be a legitimate nonconforming use. They would have had the two years that they could come in and say, okay, you know, for example, and I only use this because it's the one that's always out there. We want to be a short term rental. Well, they still would be eligible to do that as a nonconforming use, provided they were doing it, you know, that i- if they weren't doing A1 uses uh, that are different than R1, then there wouldn't be a nonconforming use, they would have had to have been doing it at the time. So I think the position that we took on it was, it's gonna, there's a process involved in rezoning, you got to go through the ordinance, you got to go through public hearings. And, you know, those folks needed to be, uh, they were, they were given notice of it. If they wanted to have, uh, short term rentals under an A1, they needed to get that done before they got shifted to to R1, if they weren't already doing it. So, uh, you, yeah, you 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 change people's use, but if they're not taking advantage of all of the A1 uses, then they don't get to jump up and say, well, wait a minute, you know, I was, I want, I want to keep that. Well, you you weren't using it in the first place. So, uh, if they, we can't, if somebody is A1 and they're already, they already have the special use permit, we can't take it away from them by making them go R1, uh, when we make that change. But if they're not, they don't get to later come back and say, okay, now I want to do it.
And then, and the predicate to Jim to some of this are the covenants, if they exist with prohibitions, correct?
Well, I mean, that was sort, that wasn't, practically speaking, yes. But it's not something that we looked at, uh, you know, that was something that the homeowner association was going to have to deal with their individual members about. Because I'm sure they were going to come in and gripe and say, well, wait a minute, I want a short term rentals. And the HOA people were going to say, well, we don't allow them anyway.
Right.
So, you know, you, but I assume that discussion took place outside our presence with the HOA, but it wasn't anything that we were going to be involved in in that regard.
I think you got, I think he withdrew his application in.
I think you're right.
In the planning, it's not even going to come to us, unless he changes his mind.
So Ronnie, back to your question, is it, you know, it doesn't seem quite fair, well, it is because, um, unless they're doing something that they're only allowed to do in A1 and not in R, R1, then they haven't lost anything. So, so we aren't taking anything from them.
Yes, sir, I I picked that up our own, thank you.
Yeah.
It didn't really, it didn't really change because he is grandfathered in.
Well, goes back to that nonconforming, yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it didn't really change on that.
If it exists.
If it existed, correct, yeah, thank you, buddy.
Sure thing.
Okay, are we good on those couple of thoughts? Okay.
I am.
There's a handful. All right, so the next half is, um, who regulates the zoning ordinance? And we're going to talk about four different groups. But before we do that, this probably seems like an insult, I'm not here to insult you, but I just want to call it out. We get a couple of calls once in a blue moon, um, so I just wanted to put on here, we can only regulate our regulations, especially as far as zoning, because that's what we're talking about today. The local regulations for zoning are all we can enforce. Federal laws are up to to Congress, of course, and then federal agencies, whoever they may be, EPA, housing and urban development. State laws are general assembly, of course, and then the regulatory agencies, VDOT, DEQ, VDH. What's up to us is our own things. I'll give you an example of why I put this in here. We got a call recently about a stack of tires. Oops, sorry. There's nothing in our zoning that that we can do about a stack of tires. DEQ might have something to say about a stack of tires for one reason or another. Um, let's say somebody calls and says, someone's living out here and they don't have a toilet, I don't know. You could call the health department, um, so there are some things that can be a bit confusing, but we we can only control our own things, but there are other agencies that maybe somebody could call in different scenarios. Um, so just wanted to call this out again, I'm not, we all know this stuff, um, but sometimes we'll get calls that zoning, you know, zoning fixes everything. Um, there are some things that we just kind of can't touch. Um, so when we're talking about who regulates our local zoning laws, it's the legislative body, which is you all, the Board of Supervisors for the county, the Planning Commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, and then the zoning administrator. And we're going to get into each one of those, um, just a little bit. So you all know yourselves, you're a board, seven of you, you more or less control the zoning power. What those regulations are, what they say, what's included, what isn't. Um, it's not staff's decision, it's not planning commission, you all are the ultimate authority in what you adopt. Assuming they again comply with Code of Virginia and any federal regulations, um, that's a given. You all establish, establish the zoning districts and the ordinance through that adoption process. So back in 1988, that board adopted that first zoning ordinance, created that first zoning map, bada boom, bada bang, you had a zoning ordinance. Every time that that zoning ordinance has changed over time, something has been added or removed. It's not because staff did it or the planning commission, it's because the board adopted that change. Um, and then, of course, as you know, you hear and decide upon zoning applications like rezonings and special use permits. Hopefully not, but any questions about yourselves? All right, Planning Commission is the next board, uh, these are required by Code of Virginia. So Code of Virginia says that every locality shall create a local planning commission in order to promote the orderly development of the locality and its environs. They are appointed by the board, so you all appoint your planning commissioner in your district, they have terms, so on, so forth. We know this, and it's written in code, they are an advisory body to you all. They make recommendations, you all have that ultimate say. Um, so let's just play out a scenario, we have a special use permit comes. Staff puts in five recommend, or five conditions. Planning Commission could add a sixth one, you all decide the ultimate conditions that are on that. Um, so again, they're just advisory, nothing will go through the planning commission as a final say that does not come to you all. Um, they're critical to land use actions for that reason, planning commission requires that it go through the planning commission first and then to you all. Um, any questions about Planning Commission? Pretty familiar with them. All right, Board of Zoning Appeals may be a bit more elusive, another board, um, required by Code of Virginia where there's a zoning ordinance. So if you have no zoning ordinance or no zoning regulations, you don't have need of this. But Code of Virginia says if you adopted an ordinance, you must have this group of people. They are appointed by the local circuit court per Code of Virginia, so not you all, you probably are aware of that. Um, so appointed by a different system. This is the body that hears appeals and variances. Um, appeals would be decisions from administrative staff or the zoning administrator. Um, for example, let's say Lisa, as the zoning administrator, determines that a use is by right, things move forward, someone may appeal that decision. Um, let's say that a planning commission recommends approval of a special use permit, board denies it. Said person can appeal that to this group. Um, so there are a couple of different types of appeals. And then the other big one here is the variance. That is more or less a tweak in the regulations. Um, Code of Virginia really cracks down and gets very specific about this. Um, whereas special use permits are a little bit more fluid, if you will, a little bit more discretionary than than variances. Um, we'll go into what a variance is a little bit later, but that's the group that hears these. Something that I want you all to be aware of that we do not currently practice now, but is an option. The Code of Virginia does allow the Board of Zoning Appeals the ability to grant or revoke special use permits for certain uses. So just exactly like you all do, um, you can choose to give the the BZA all of the special use permits, one of them, some of them, not per case, but for example, you could let the BZA hear all the special use permits for a campground or that home second single family dwelling. Um, if you do this, it would cut out the planning commission, so it really just goes to one board. Um, so again, we don't do that now, the, our BZA only hears those appeals and the variances, but this is an option that's that's utilized throughout the state. One thing that I want to hit home on here, because if anyone is listening, hopefully, I have seen some comments out on social media about this. The BZA does not rezone property. They only hear appeals and they only hear variances, that is it. We've talked about this a couple of times today, and we talked about it the last time we met. The only people that rezone property would be you all as the board, whether you initiate it or that property owner does. BZA has no final authority, they don't even hear that case. The only group of people that can rezone a property is this group right here. So I just want to make that clear, it's very confusing, if you weren't in this world, do you have a question? Okay. If you weren't in this world and you hear Board of Zoning Appeals, you would say, oh, zoning, it must be them. Um, so totally understandable, but if you hear that, especially with the zoning ordinance coming, this update coming, it might stir up some questions. Um, the Board of Zoning Appeals is not that group. Any questions on them? Zoning administrator, so you'll notice I have little groups of people up here. You're all groups, you're teams, you're working together. Zoning administrator is just one person, um, it's one person at a time, they're appointed by the boards, they're appointed by you. Code of Virginia states that the zoning administrator shall have necessary authority on behalf of the governing body, which is you all, to administer and enforce the zoning ordinance. Um, so more or less what this person does, they will handle enforcement, and they will interpret the zoning ordinance. That does not mean that they make up new regulations on the fly every time somebody comes in, based on this person or that person or that case or the other. What their job is, is to read the ordinance as it is written and interpret what it means. A good ordinance leaves very little for interpretation, it should be crystal clear what's trying to say. Um, even if you have the most crystal clear ordinance in the world, there are going to be cases or or scenarios where it may be a little bit of a, hmm, I don't know, that's the role of this person, that's why this person exists. Um, we all have one, cities, towns, counties. Um, our zoning administrator is Lisa, I'm sure you all are aware of that. Um, I believe it was Steve before that, um, so they change over time. But their real role is to go through that enforcement process when it happens and kind of guide that and steer that ship hand in hand with the county attorney when it's necessary, um, but to interpret that ordinance and what it reads. Uh, an example would be, let's say, let's say Mr. Tatum moves to the zoned area. And he's like, all right, I've just moved here, I want to open a barber shop. And you're like, I'm not going to give it up. And you find a, you find a vacant building. And you find a, you find a vacant building and you call the, you call the planning department and you have the zoning administrator read their ordinance and say, is this an allowed use? Am I allowed to do this thing in whatever district I am in? And she would read that. Staff is capable. This is a very generalized example, but sometimes it comes down to really needing that, that, that final opinion. She may write you a letter and say, this is my official opinion. It's a by right use. This is your district. Or, yep, it's a use. You need a special use permit. So that person is there to really guide the enforcement process and to interpret what's written. They're not making things up as they go. It's supposed to all be there for them, which is another huge proponent of this zoning ordinance update. Our ordinance, it's gibberish sometimes. It's very hard to read. When it was written back in 1988, things were written differently then. It was a lot of legalese. Terminology was different. The way you wrote a sentence read a little bit differently. We're all about being user-friendly now for the zoning administrator's sake and the, the developers, the residents, whether you own a home and you want to put up a fence or you're an electrician and you own a company and you know, you want to open your business. Whatever it is, we need it to be easy to read for everyone involved. Any questions about this person?
Can I just chime in there just for clarity? Is the other thing that maybe you didn't mention with the BZA and with the zoning administrators, the, the relief valve for anyone who doesn't agree with the zoning administrator's decision is not this board, not the Board of Supervisors, it's the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so if someone, most of the time when Lisa makes a decision, someone doesn't like it, one side or the other, you know, doesn't agree with the decision. And so the relief valve for disagreement with the zoning administrator is to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to adjudicate that. And then the next step from that is to the circuit court if, if they don't like that decision. The good thing with the BZA hearing, decisions of the zoning administrator is it does have a public hearing aspect to it. And so anyone who's afflicted by, you know, the decision can come and they can comment to the Board of Zoning. Just wanted to point that distinction out as well when it comes to the, kind of the process, the legal process. So Lisa makes a decision, sends out that zoning violation letter, works with the county attorney. It goes to, you know, they, the people either comply or don't comply or they agree or don't agree with that decision. Because when Lisa writes that decision, she has to, this is one of those state code things. She has to put in there that they have 30 days to appeal her decision. And so if that appeal is made, then that's what goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So just wanted to point kind of that out where it's, that's in code. That's the way it has to happen under the code.
Any questions? Okay. One more section and then we'll be done, I think. Types of zoning actions. This is a big one, and so I'm going to go through it as quickly as I can. You have by right uses and you have discretionary uses, either one or the other, when we're talking about uses. By right means you do not require legislative action by the Board of Supervisors. You can just do it. You may need to get a zoning permit. You may obviously need to get building permits. You can't go wild, wild west out there. But you're more or less, you're not going to the Board of Supervisors and you're not going through that public hearing to get special permission. It's just something that you're allowed to do. A quick example would be in a residential district, you can have a, a home. That's a by right use. These are approved administratively is what that term is. When you hear something that's done administratively, it's in the planning office. It's by staff. Otherwise, it comes, of course, to the Planning Commission and the board or the BZA in that variance situation.
Stephanie, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
On the by right uses, where you do not, you know, where you have quote unquote permission, you have to go to a different section of the code to understand that you may have to submit a building plan, you know, or master plan, even though you're in a by right situation. So do we need to hook that somewhere around or defined in our definitions or either with by right category?
What we could do, I feel like I'm trying to remember what I've done in the past. In, in the, basically the section or the chapter, if you will, the article where this, these uses will live. It may say, you know, not this exact language, but, you know, by right is not discretionary. You don't need approval, but you may need a site plan, major or minor. You may need building, building permits. You have to apply or comply with building code. Health department. It will kind of have a caveat to that. Now, it's hopefully up to people to read it, but we can include that.
I would, I would like to make sure if it's appropriate.
Yeah, that's, I think.
That our by right category indicates that exclusion.
Sure. Yeah, that's doable.
Okay, thank you.
And then two, I don't listen to her conversations, but I know she's doing it. When someone will call and they get to Megan, that first line of defense, and they call and they say, hey, what is this? Can I do this? She will read the ordinance and say, yeah, it's a by right use, but you may need X, Y, or Z. So our staff is saying that, but I mean, again, going back to that, not that we don't want to talk, we will talk to anyone at any time, but some people want to be able to go to this and get the answer themselves. They don't want to call. They don't want to call when we're in our lunch break or at five o'clock when they got off work, but we left 30 minutes ago. So we can put it in here, but we also try to walk people through that anytime that, that it comes up. Flip side of that is discretionary. These are projects, we're going to say projects. It could be an application. It could be a development. Hopefully you know what I'm trying to say, that do require that legislative approval, whether that's you all for a rezoning or a special use permit or the BZA for that variance. So those are really the two buckets. Something will be one or the other. Your discretionary actions will be your zoning text amendments, which is what we're about to do with the zoning ordinance rewrite. A zoning map amendment, that's a rezoning, like what Box Woodgreen did or Aspire did to open his business. Special use permits, you all know well, and then variances. Those are the four things that, that require discretion to happen. They, they require someone to hear it and to make a decision. Whereas the by right uses, it's kind of already decided. You just have to check the boxes. So zoning text amendments are changing the ordinance itself. Again, not the map. These are two separate things. So the zoning text amendment is what changes the ordinance itself. This is almost always initiated by a Board of Supervisor or a town council, city council. I'm sure it's happened before where someone has come and said, I'm an expert. I think we should change this code section and it should read this way. But more or less, the text of the ordinance is going to come from you all. You're the, the board that approves it. You have to follow those Code of Virginia requirements. So that includes a public notice on, on different avenues, advertisements in the paper, two public hearings, one with the Planning Commission and then one with yourselves. Any text amendments, this goes back to that very beginning that we talked about, and I know I've said before many times. Because this is a tool to implement your comp plan, anything that you, that you change should really align with what your comprehensive plan is saying. So I know I've used this example before. Let's say the comprehensive plan says we need more housing types. Your zoning ordinance, if you go to change the text, it shouldn't take away how many options you have. It should add to them. So they shouldn't be in conflict there. And again, amending this does not mean that it's the map. Two different things. So two examples here to put it in context. In July of 2022, I hope I have that date right. You all approved, adopted an amendment to the text to add solar regulations into the ordinance. That didn't change the map. It only changed the text. Another example is that big project that we have coming up. The whole point of that project is to amend the text. Any questions on text amendments? Complementary to that are the map amendments, which another term for those are rezonings. That's what we generally call them. This is changing a property zoning district. And you would normally do this to use it in a way that you couldn't before. Again, you want to open a business, but you can't. You want to build a home, but it's zone business, vice versa. These are typically initiated by the property owners. Again, there have been rare cases of shore where a board has come through for one reason or another, or a council, and taken a swath of land or won and rezoned it. But typically it's initiated by the property owner or owners. It's approved by you all as well. It also follows those Code of Virginia requirements, public notice, notification to neighbors, public hearings. These, as you're well aware, often include proffers. These have to be voluntary. They have to be specific. They have to have a legitimate connection to that use of the land for which they're rezoning. Let's say you have a rezoning that has proffers. That does not change the zoning ordinance. It does not change the text. It runs with that land, just like a special use permit does. This should also, if you rezone a property, should align with that comprehensive plan. In the staff reports that you've had for rezonings recently, there's going to be a section in there, hopefully you remember, where it says comprehensive plan. And I'll write a little bit in there and say it aligns with it or it doesn't. Again, doesn't change the text. Two separate things. We've talked about this a couple of times this evening, but an example would be Box Woodgreen or Idlewood going to rezone their neighborhood or I do not remember his name, forgive me, that opened Aspire. But different, varying levels of intensity here on why you would rezone something. Any questions about rezoning? Special use permits, you all know well. They grant uses that wouldn't normally be permitted. They're not by right. And the reason that you would have something as a special use permit is typically it would require more attention or it's a little bit more nuanced than, than other things that are in that district. It has some special cause that it needs a little bit more control over it. These are applied for by property owners or applicants. They don't have to be the property owner, but you do need that signature. Example of this one would be the daycare. That was maybe this time last year in Union Hall. Can't remember her name. She came for a special use permit. She was just the operator. Someone else owned the property. So that's who typically applies for special use permits. Surprising, surprising. Approved by the Board of Supervisors. And it must also follow that, that process. Notification to the neighbors, posting in the newspaper, posting on the site, and then the public hearings. Contrary to rezonings that have proffers, special, special use permits will have conditions. You all are very familiar with what those are. Again, these need to be logical and, and suitable safeguards to the problem that you're trying to address. It can't be, all right, you can operate the short-term rental, but only if you give popsicles out every Saturday. It has to be a legitimate tie to the use. Those do not need to be voluntary, as you know. These too should comply with that comprehensive plan or your village plans. Any questions about special use permits? You know those pretty well. Okay, and then the last thing is the variance. This is a reasonable deviation from regulations of lot size or building size. Other things, but those are the big ones that you'll see most often. These are also applied for by the property owner or the applicant with the property owner in, in tow. Approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. So this goes straight to the BZA and that's their first and last stop with this. Similarly, there's a process from code that it has to follow. Public notice, public notification, public hearing process. Again, that's just one public hearing versus the other two that have two. Steve already touched on this a little bit, but these are a couple of different things. But one's a release valve, a little bit of pressure going off. If you disagree with something either as the applicant or the neighbor, you have some avenue to say, hey, I want to be heard here. I don't agree with that decision. And then it kind of runs its course. Variances are used where the literal application of the ordinance would either create an unnecessary or unreasonable hardship on the landowner. It would unreasonably restrict the utilization of the property or it would alleviate a hardship due to a physical condition relating to the property. You don't want to give variances for something that could easily be built into the zoning ordinance. So let's say you have a, a district where you constantly are pulling the setback. You know, you're letting them deviate a little bit. Maybe it stands to reason, you just change the zoning regulations. Hardships or, or variances are really about individual hardships that are very specific to that property. So it might be a poor example, but I pulled one. This is not something that's happened recently. Maybe a property owner has a very steep slope and they can't build where they're supposed to. They need to build within that setback or they're, you know, on a 90-degree angle. So that's really what a variance would be. Not, I have 10 open acres and I just want my garage over there. That's not a hardship. That's a choice. Any questions about variances?
Stephanie, should we talk about easements as well?
We can.
I mean, should that be part of this overall discussion or is that just kind of ancillary?
A little bit, only because when it comes to zoning, we can't.
It's not zoned.
Yeah, yeah. But if we have questions, we, I will certainly, I mean, especially with Jim on the line, we can answer them. We have a lot of them here. We have a lot of them, I mean, anyone has them. But if you have questions or you're kind of scratching your head about easements, I know it's five and I've once again talked for a long time, but we're all here. So if you have things, we'll, I'll get through the rest of this so we can get to easements.
It's fine. We don't have to do it today.
Got any questions?
Okay. So this is my last slide. If we have time for it. If not, we can give it to, to you for easements or anything that's come up. Since we've.
Go ahead.
Okay. Since we've gone through everything and hopefully I was helpful. It's one thing to know something. It's an entirely different thing to try to teach it to someone else. So you're probably half asleep and I would not blame you. But hopefully this has helped. And I know we've talked about this specific thing multiple times now. What will come out of that zoning ordinance update? But hopefully this makes a little bit more sense now or has some more context. So our district standards, those might change. Minimum lot size, maximum lot size, et cetera. Your setbacks, maybe new districts. We've talked about that. Again, that wouldn't necessarily put them on the map, but someone would then have an option to say, oh, okay, I can go to this new district now. We could add in more community design standards. We could lessen them. Less parking standards, more parking standards, less lighting, more lighting. Process improvements. I feel like a lot will come out of this. If you remember that conversation we had before about supplementary regulations, building more in so that we have less special use permits. That would be a process improvement in a way. This could also be timeframes. We might have really long timeframes. Maybe Code of Virginia allows less time to review something. Just off the top of my head. So I would say we'll probably have a fair amount of process improvements out of this process. The supplementary regulations we have touched on, zoning ordinance or zoning use matrix, taking those long lists that are hard to get through and putting it into one easy place. And then enforcement. We've talked about this a ton. There will be a fair amount of change to that to make sure we're either with state code or a little bit above state code to protect ourselves. So I'm done now. Two and a half hours later. Thank you for listening. Any questions regardless of what it's about?
Anybody got any questions or comments for Steph?
Stephanie, I would like to thank you. This is a lot of work we've done. And I think the board will probably tell you it's been highly.
Good, thank you. Thank you for paying attention and listening and asking questions and asking for this. It might be Mr. Gwynn.
Stephanie. Laurie and myself have been going directly to take some classes on land use. We could save a lot of time. Appreciate you.
Oh, sure.
Very informative.
Okay, good.
So I would say that what we've been working on for the last month, this trumps everything we've seen.
Wow, thank you.
It really does.
Thank you. That makes me feel good.
I certainly echo what you said. This has probably been one of the more informative meetings that we've had in a long, long, long time. And it's, I've, I've taken, I'm like the rest of the folks. It's been a lot come out of this.
Good.
And it's very well presented. I know you spent a lot of time doing this in your office and this was very well received by everyone. And it, it's cleared up a lot of questions.
Oh, good.
The only question that I've got or discussion, I know, and I do not know if staff is prepared for this today, but there wasn't a question asked if someone wanted to change from non-zone to zoning, the process or the procedure. Has that been discussed or do we know what that might be? And that might be a question more for Mr. Gwynn than for your, your office. But I don't know if any research has been done on that.
I would say, I'll let him answer, or maybe Steve. I don't know why it would be different than like a rezone process, right?
Well, I'll, I'll start and then I'll let Jim jump in. Right now in the ordinance, it specifically says, it outlines where that line is, where that zoning versus non-zoning line is. So I think there would probably have to be some action by the board to change that line. So as an example, if someone.
Would it be the board as a whole or just that supervisor in that particular district?
It would have to be the board as a whole. Yeah.
But the supervisor in that district, to me, looks like the one that would have to initiate that process.
It could be that, or I think. It could be that, or I think citizens could come and initiate, you know, request that, that the board initiate that process. I, I think that, well, all I would say is, I think the board has the discretion to, to change the areas of the county that they wanna have zoning in, um, at any time, either whether that's the entire county or a portion of the county.
But one, I guess maybe I'm piggybacking on Ronnie's question here, is that let's, let's say, for example, um, one person on the board wanted an unzoned area to go, and, and maybe the person that's in that district is completely against zoning. But if they brought it up, and got the rest of the board to vote on it, it wouldn't matter. I guess, isn't, is that kinda what you're getting at there, Ronnie?
Well, it's kinda like with any decision, four, four votes, yeah.
But that decision could be, a decision for, I get it's four votes. But a discussion for zoning, even if it's not brought up by the supervisor in that district, the rest of the board could bring it up and do it anyway.
Right, that's right.
Correct, now, there would still have to be the public hearing process to, to change where the zoning boundary is. Uh, 'cause that's tip, that's currently in your ordinance now, as far as where that boundary is. So there would have to be a public hearing process, but yes, with four votes on the board, that could be changed, either way, to add more zoning or take, or take away zoned areas, correct.
Would that be just a public hearing, or does it have to go on a referendum to be voted on by that district?
I'll leave that up to Jim, but I, I do not think you need a referendum to do that.
I, and...
I'm trying to remember, Ronnie, I think there was a referendum initially to have any zoning at all.
I, I remember, I remember that, Jim, because, uh, as I, as I said when this came up before, uh, I voted, I voted for zoning because of that, them four guys wanting to come in and put that landfill, you know, there in the Boone District. And so I do know that there was an initial vote, it was on a referendum, and that was, I think it was eighty-six, eighty-seven, somewhere right along in there.
So, for Nick's purposes, and this, piggybacking on you, Nick, could Nick, as an example, or, or Tim, if you have an unzoned district, and you wanted to do a division of your district, and say some of it's zoned and some of it's not, can it be subdivided that way?
I think, go ahead, Jim.
I, I think parcels can be, um, zoned independent of other parcels. So what you would do is, you would, you'd have to go through and basically get the, I, I, the way I would write the ordinance is you get the tax map and numbers for all the parcels that you're gonna rezone. And, or, or apply zoning to, and draft an ordinance that says, okay, they're all gonna be zoned in the A1 district, or whatever.
That, I was just saying, that might be an option, Nick, I mean, whoever's thinking about that.
Jim, what's your thoughts about this playing devil's advocate? Could that be done in reverse in a zoned district to un, unzone it? If you wanted to pull something out?
I think if you, uh, I think if somebody came in, and, well, one person probably not, but if you had the whole, you know, let's say there's a ma, you know, a whole section of the magisterial district that came in and said, we don't want zoning anymore. And I think we could do a, uh, an ordinance that repealed zoning for a particular section. Now, then you're gonna get into, and I'm not sure I'm ready to totally tackle it right now, but you're probably gonna get into questions of non-conforming uses once the zoning ordinance is gone, and what, you know, but it shouldn't matter, because once it's unzoned, you can, I guess you can do anything. You, the other thing you're probably gonna get into is you're gonna have people who, you know, opposed it, and then are probably gonna look at it from a constitutional standpoint, and say, wait a minute. You know, it's one thing to change my zoning, but when you take it away completely, you, you're taking the value, you know, they could argue you're taking the value of their property away, uh, because they're counting on their neighbors not having, you know, hog farms. Uh, so, you're gonna, I sure hope it doesn't happen, Ronnie, I sure...
Yeah, I was just, I was, I mean, I just come with, I just, you know, in my sick mind, that just popped in, that as devil's advocate, could it, could it go back in reverse?
One thing we're gonna...
You're talking about, you're talking about opening a can of worms, buddy, that would...
Oh, yeah, that's a, that's a good one.
One thing we're gonna have to really be watching, and we are, is the state talking about potentially coming in and telling localities what to do with solar farms, um, zoned or unzoned. We're gonna have to probably fight that, 'cause there's, it's not going away. And, I mean, do we want the state coming in and telling us that they're gonna put a utility solar farm in our district at a given site? That, that, you know, that, that's something that's real.
Thank you, Stephanie.
You're welcome.
Excellent, excellent presentation, and, uh, very informative.
Good, if there's ever any other things that, that I can, I'm happy to come, I would rather somebody ask than, you know, I don't know everything else, but zoning I got.
Mr. Chairman, one thing's for sure, we learned one important fact here today, that Stephanie has a fascination with barber shops.
Apparently I do, I guess I need to go in there. It's funny, I was supposed to have a hair appointment today that, of course, I scheduled that I didn't realize.
Just come over to my district, I got a barber shop.
And so, I guess I'm just like thinking about, just getting all buzzed off, I guess, I don't know where this came from, but... And ice cream, I saw, I saw you eating ice cream, and I was like, now I need ice cream. And so I just went and got an entire milkshake. Thank you for listening, um, truly, if there's ever anything you wanna dive into, whether it's zoning or planning, if you want something similar for other topics, I would love to help you understand things better if you don't understand them.
Thank you, Seth.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you so much.
And the consultant will also offer a piece of, of wisdom, if there's a certain topic you wanna know about, um, or if there's something that you all learned here today, you've mentioned something, Laurie, um, that people need to be aware, maybe of, you know, the text doesn't change the map and vice versa. If there are things that you think the consultant, 'cause they're really gonna drive the ship, staff will just be there, you know, for mascot purposes, um, at those public workshops, where they're at the public and they're there to hear from them, let them know that. Like, hey, I think our people need to hear about this, that, or the other. Um, they'll touch the general stuff, kind of like I've done at a very, very basic level, but if there's something they really need to drive home that you know your constituents are gonna be confused about, please tell them.
I'm gonna be emailing you with a list.
Okay, that's perfect, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Dinner time.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, board procedure discussions, I don't know if, uh, Mr. Whitlow, or if the county attorney, Mr. Gwynn, who's gonna take care of this, outside agency funding and follow up on motions and protocol. I'll turn it over to Mr. Whitlow.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, of course, as discussed at the last board meeting, um, some, there were some discussions, I know, Supervisor Smith had mentioned specifically, um, this topic of outside funding agencies and so forth, and the, and the topic of when matters come up, that, uh, whether they're budgeted or, or not, or just matters in general, um, if we're, if we're funding outside groups and so forth, to, um, and it came up recently with the poultry study and so forth, and so the county entered into a memorandum of understanding with, um, with the Farm Bureau on that. And then maybe going forward, um, you know, how, as staff, if, if there's any points that the board would like to instruct us, maybe Mr. Gwynn, uh, with him, um, and, and he may have some thoughts too, as to these memorandum of understandings and, um, going forward. And then also, um, some discussion as to, I, I know some localities, our board rules of procedure, of course, um, you know, the, a, as they stand now, motions made and, and so forth, and we move forward with that motion. Some localities, um, um, do these motions on second readings, where there's a first reading, and then sometimes there's a second reading in case there's other things that come up. Typically, as staff, we try, as, as, thinking back on Tuesday, reflective on Tuesday, a lot of due diligence work goes in from staff, we try to answer as many questions as we can, budgetarily process, otherwise, uh, whether it be consent agenda or regular items on the agenda, uh, ahead of time, but we do understand as staff, there, there may be times of emergency, there may be things that come up, uh, from the board, um, and, and the board may wish to move on sooner than, than, than waiting to a next board agenda, and, and we understand that as staff. Uh, but that said, for that very reasons, I think, you know, perhaps some localities do these motions uh, with a first reading, and then if there's any questions, then come back and do a second reading. I'm not the parliamentarian, and so Mr. Gwynn is, uh, so if there are any legal questions, and certainly Jim has several clients, and I'm sure he could offer more expertise on this than I can. But, uh, I'll stop there, Mr. Chairman, and maybe, uh, Mr. Gwynn or others from the board, if, if there's any thoughts or guidance that you all may have for us, uh, and, you know, whether we look at this now, whether we look at it, uh, as we go forward in the future, also during our organizational meeting in January, whatever the pleasure the board may be, so...
Mr. Gwynn?
Um, well, I do have several clients, they do it several different ways, you know, in the city of Salem, they have a first and a second reading of an ordinance. In, uh, Allegheny County, they have a setup to where you can't take action on an item unless it's listed on the agenda as an action item. And then they leave themselves some leeway by saying that they can add something to the agenda, uh, to be addressed that, that evening, provided, uh, the board's unanimous in approving a motion to waive their policy. And that way, you can have, you know, if one person says, I'm not comfortable doing that, I wanna reevaluate it, let's bring it back, then they can do it that way. Uh, it, it's generally not a hindrance, um. I think the board's policy kinda came out of a weird situation that ironically led to me being hired, um, when they had four people, I think they had three people missing from a meeting, and of the four, three were in favor of firing the county administrator, so those three made the motion that night and fired the administrator, uh, out of the blue, and so as a majority, they came back and, you know, it got a little bit crazy, but anyway, they were, they wanted to make sure that they didn't have anything like that that could happen again that wasn't on the agenda. I don't see that happening with our board here, uh, but I do understand the concern, uh, that when something's brought up, if you don't feel like you have enough information, at the same time, you don't wanna, you know, create a rift or anything, um, that it's, it's not a bad idea, uh, to make sure, uh, that we've thought things through, I mean, you know, I can think of times when somebody's, you know, and, and I don't, I don't wanna speak ill, uh, 'cause I think the world of him, but, but my good friend Ronnie Mitchell used to be famous for that, he would just all of a sudden pipe up with this idea. And I'd be sitting there going, don't do this, don't, don't wait a minute now, let's think about it, and then off we go. Uh, and I think it becomes a real, uh, it, it can be, it can get out of hand, and, and you could find yourself, uh, without having time to consider the unintended consequences, uh, of some things. Uh, so far, I can't say that any of that has really, uh, happened necessarily, I know with regard to, uh, Snow Creek, we wish we had had an MOU in place, uh, but I think we already know what's gonna happen there, so that's fine. Uh, but there're gonna be other things that come up, that you may wanna kinda just put, you know, it's a way of pumping the brakes. Uh, even the best idea probably has a flaw in it somewhere that would be worth some review. And unless something's truly an emergency, do you really need to do it that night?
Okay, thank you. Does this have any questions or comments from any of the board members or staff on this? Nick?
I, I, it's a good idea, and I'm fine with it, but the problem I see with it is when we get into the thick of it. It's gonna be whether I think something's an emergency, and you think something's an emergency.
Right.
And going outside of the budget cycle, and, and the money is the money, and we're spending taxpayer dollars. So I could go back to Tuesday's meeting, where everyone here, well, Ronnie had left, everyone voted to give county employees the fifth off, which is a Friday. That was out of the blue. So if we go and do what we're saying here, that would have to wait till next month. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong.
Unless, unless you unanimously agreed, Nick, to, uh, waive the policy.
But that, that still falls back to what I think's an emergency and what somebody else thinks is an emergency.
I agree.
So if we wanted to give that day off, one person could say, no, we gotta talk about that next meeting, and that deal is done. 'Cause the fifth comes before next month's meeting.
Yeah.
And that's out of the budget cycle, whether anybody cares to admit it or not. When we give employees that day off, landfill employees, sheriff's office employees, public safety employees, we gotta pay them all overtime. Every one of them, that's expensive. So that, that takes us completely to a different level. So before we get into this, everybody needs to understand that there's gonna come a time, you can be like, well dang, I wish I could do this, but old what's-his-face over there don't, don't think it's as much of an emergency as I do. And so they're gonna kill it. And it doesn't take four votes, it's one. But I agree with Jim, what he's saying there, that's the only way you can make it work, is it have to be unanimous. But we need to think about that before we get into something like this.
That's a valid, that's a valid point.
When I brought this up, um, I brought it up within just a very fundamental com, you know, baseline of just basically saying, there are certain things that I think I would like us to think about that are problematic for us, that would, that we would articulate, not just to have a broad, everything goes for a second reading, right? Um, and I agree with you, Nick, about defining what an emergency is, and that's a tough hill to climb, and it's subjective. Um, you know, so initially, I was thinking, you know, if there is a funding request that somebody comes up with on the fly, and it's not in the budget, right, it's over and above what's in the budget, let's, let's have a second reading on that, give us all a chance to go back and, and look at the budget, look at the issue itself, and come back and decide whether we're gonna hit a reserve, as an example, for an amount of money that's not in the budget. To me, that's, things like that need a second reading, we need a chance to research and decide if we wanna hit a reserve for something that's not in the budget. So many times, we get hit with that, and it's, well, you know, Chairman Thompson has, on numerous times, well, where's the money gonna come from, right, Ronnie? And so I'm trying to get the board out of a position of having to make on-the-fly decisions without the benefit of a second read by policy, um, but I think that we could articulate the circumstances where we would want, um, a second reading to occur. That would be really the main reason that I even brought it up. Um, and it goes back to the fire trucks, you know, telling us we need to buy a fire truck by October, and you need to make a motion tonight, or it's gonna cost another half million dollars. These are big decisions, it's taxpayers' money, and we need to be very cognizant and thoughtful about how we spend it. And so I would much rather have the opportunity as a supervisor to research this stuff, if it's over and above budget, if it's something that's gotta come out of, of a reserve, for example, um, so that I can make sure for myself that I'm being very, I'm being a good fiduciary. Uh, now, in terms of emergencies, I would yield, you know, I feel strongly about the budget piece, but the emergencies, to me, is gonna be much more difficult to articulate and define, um, because of the nature, Nick, of what you've just said. I think you're exactly right.
Well, and, and, and I, I agree with you, and my thing is, if we go into this, it's gonna get, it's gonna get in the weeds, 'cause it's, it's gonna be things that some of us think is important, some of us don't. And, and to the budget, I, I, you've heard me say a bunch of times, this is a budget issue.
Right.
But, and even back to what I'm saying on what we just voted unanimously, and I'm not saying I regret voting for it, what we just did Tuesday is the same thing. There's no, there's no line item in our budget that says, well, the Fourth of July is gonna fall on Thursday, we gotta give 'em Friday off. There's no line item for that, that money comes from somewhere, or am I wrong, Mr. Carter, is there a line item that says that?
No, there's not.
It, it all goes back, it's all, we can't pick and choose where we're gonna do this. This is a, across the board, nothing to me.
Well, I think you're talking about where there's a budget implication, because something like a holiday, just on the face of it, may not look like it has, you know, it, it's just doing something good for the employees.
But it is a budget implication to me.
But it is a budget implication, that's my point. And so when it's a budget implication, we're trying to take more money out of a budget that's not, money's not budgeted, it's not there. So then it becomes a decision, do we do it or do we not, and if we do, where's the money coming from?
Well, I guess the same, I guess for the overtime for July 5th, Chris, and I'm just gonna figure out where that money comes from. Right, it's the same thing.
Oh, I agree with you, I agree with you.
Tim?
Uh, two things, one, having the second reading or taking a pause on some of these things, how does that differ from if I don't feel comfortable with something, ask, making a motion to table something till the next meeting? I mean, uh, you know, that's done on a, a vote-by-vote basis.
Off the top of my head, to answer that question, the only thing, because I've made it, I've made the, asked to table something, and because I didn't have others, it wasn't done.
Yeah, it, you know, it requires a majority of the board.
It requires a majority, but this, if, if one person says no, then it is automatically tabled this way.
I don't like it that way.
And, and...
You don't like it, where one person can stop the whole thing?
No, I don't.
You want it like it is, it's tabled, it has to be.
It needs to be a majority.
Majority of not.
And I, and I get, I get it from what Lori's saying, that sometimes we need to step back and look at things, but we can't pick the things that we're going to step back and look at, the things we're not, is my hope, is my point.
I, I agree with, I agree with everything that's been, been said here with, it needs to be a second reading. It does, we don't, we got to be careful of how, when we do a knee-jerk reaction. And, and I will, I will tell, I will tell you this now, I, you know, I was going to bring it up today about the extra day off, but I'm going to be perfectly honest with you. When this come up, I thought it was a good idea, and I support it 100%, but I never, ever in my mind considered that the overtime. I never even thought about the overtime until, that if people that has to work, because it's a holiday, they're going to get time and a half.
Did you ever get time and a half at the Sheriff's Department?
Well, now that was at the Sheriff's Department, though, Tim, that's not counting the other places.
Are we paying them time and a half?
We got, I'm, I'm asking that.
Or they just getting another day off for it?
Well, anytime you have a situation like this, there's a budget impact, indirect even, to say that employees are not working, but they're still getting paid.
They're getting paid, and I can tell you where the money's coming from, it's coming from their salary built into the budget. So that's where the money comes from, it's in the budget. It's part, it's their salary, we're just giving them a day off with pay.
But is there, Brian, is there extra dollars in this with overtime for, like, landfill or special things? I mean, I'm asking you.
Yes, so there are several factors that go into things like an extra holiday. Yes, there is an extra cost. To, to Mr. Tatum's point, for Sheriff Public Safety.
We didn't get it.
My understanding is that overtime is not paid there, they bank a holiday. And so, but it's an extra holiday that will have to be paid out, so there is a cost. It's not a time and a half. For folks that work probably at the landfill, that would realistically be more time and a half, because they would be considered essential personnel. For, for the rest of employees, you're correct, they, it is budgeted, essentially salaried in their line item, there would be no extra cost per se. You would have the implicit cost of lost productivity, if you wanted to, to, to look at that. The, the others, the offset to that is, well, you're also shutting county buildings down, so there's a facility saving, so where, where does that balance out? We've never run the numbers to that detail. I would say ultimately, in the, the offset of it, yes, there is going to be a net cost when you add a holiday that wasn't initially intended, yes.
I just have one comment, and I, I'm fine with the employees having a day off. I think going back to these knee-jerk votes on spending money, I think in the future, we need to look to Chris, or Jim Gwynn, or Brian, or Steve to step up and say to the board, hey, you know, before you all do this, maybe we need to work out a memorandum of agreement. And, and it's not going to offend me if you all interject into these discussions with the rest of the board, but it, if, if I had had that guidance, that, that maybe would have changed some of my voting on some of these things along the way. And I don't mean that as a negative to the staff, I think y'all do a great job, but I think that's an area where, for myself, I would like more guidance.
I think, and for me, I think Chris summarized it very well in 2020, when COVID first come about, when he stood right there and told us that we needed to take a strategic pause. Sometimes we just need to take a strategic pause.
Need to take a pause and rethink this, just because it's a good idea doesn't mean it's a good idea.
And, and, you know, there's always going to be these emergencies, and like Nick said, what's an emergency to me might not be, but if you can convince enough of us that something is an emergency, then I think it should be taken action. But if it's not, then it needs to wait until we can gather all the information. Every one of us should be able to vote on something feeling like we have all of our questions answered. I, I hate voting on something when I've got a question that's, that I can't get answered. And, and that's one reason I appreciate what Stephanie did here tonight, because there's a lot of things I vote on in other districts that I have a lot of questions, and a lot of times I'll vote one way or the other because I don't fully grasp, and you'll see me a lot of times going out to some of these locations and seeing them, because I, some of the stuff, the pictures and stuff, graphs, don't do me any good, I've, I've got to drive out and look at it. And so, you know, for me, I don't, I'm not really comfortable voting on something that if I've still got questions, so I, I think we just need to take a strategic pause from time to time.
See, that's a good discussion here, and getting everybody figuring out what's, what's going on and, and what it's saying, but I think that, I think one thing that I'm taking from this, and you all need to tell me, is that everybody is second guessing the, well, it seems to have turned into a knee-jerk decision, and there needs to be a second reading or a time to think about something prior to taking a vote on it and it coming out. And, and is that, is that pretty much the conclusion of what's going on here? Marshall, yeah. Nick?
Sure, my thing is, but I hate to beat a dead horse. Going back to what I was saying, sometimes waiting till next month ain't good enough. I guess maybe we'll have to do it on Tuesday and think about it Wednesday, and then vote on it Thursday.
We could have done that this time.
Sure.
You know, and it would have still been before that, but it's hindsight, you know, it's hindsight.
But that's what this is all about, is the hindsight.
This, this here is working out, what we're doing now is working out some of this hindsight, that it could, that it could be done. Mike?
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what's been said here, of course, you know, we all, I was in a retail business where we made decisions on a daily basis. We, we could have a vendor come in there and spend $100,000 in 35 minutes, so I'm used to, to doing that, but this is a little different situation, and I think sometimes maybe we do do things knee-jerk, and I'll give an example, some of these fire trucks we've bought in the past, they come in here and say, if we don't buy it today, it's going up a half million dollars. And I feel coerced to vote for it, and I'm not doing that in the future. I'll just tell you all that right now, the next time they come in here and want to buy something and tell us we have to do it, they know months in advance when these things are going to have to be purchased, so I'm not going to do that moving forward.
Tim?
I think everything's been said, I think, you know, that taking that strategic pause is just good for us all, and, you know, from my career in law enforcement, and you know where I'm coming from sometimes, and I, I know where Mike said, sometimes you have to make a, a split decision, and there's going to be times where this board has to make a quick decision. But anytime that we don't follow in that category, and we had the luxury of, of taking our time, it's, I think it's more important for us to make the right decision, an informed decision than it is to make that quick decision.
Lori?
Yeah, I, I agree with everything that's been said, I think, one of the things I heard somebody said that was really important to me, which is our Thursday meeting, that we were, we're meeting twice, you know, during Board Meeting Week. We, if there's something more urgent, we could piggyback on that Thursday as an example. But if just by exercise, we put into place a policy that says whether you all want to describe the occasions, or just say, any action item will, may require a second reading, or however you want to put it into place. But I really appreciate the thoughts that I'm hearing from, from you. I, I don't feel like I'm out there somewhere in the stratosphere with this thing. But I think it will improve our ability as a board to feel more confident in being fiduciaries of taxpayers' money, and will be more, the worst thing I hate is leaving here and on my 30-minute drive home saying, what in the world did you just do, Lori Smith, you know?
I think we've all been there.
Yeah, and, and it's just kind of like, if I had just A, B, C, and D, you know, and I think it will help us as a board to be more thoughtful and deliberate. And we have the control setting up here, if, if there's something that we don't want to send to a second read because of whatever reason, we can, like Jim said, we can pull for an exemption on the policy and take whatever action we need at the time. Just my two cents.
Dan, what's your thoughts?
I like the second reading, so I, that force, that could have been brought up last month ahead of the Fourth of July, so I like the idea.
Did he say he did like, okay, thank you, Dan. All right, and I want, I want, I'm going to do this a little bit different, I'm going to open this up for our staff that's here. If you've got any comment or thoughts, we want to hear. Chris?
Sure, well, you know, a few thoughts, you know, as I mentioned earlier, you know, staff does its best when, obviously, I think we all do our best when we can do something in advance, when we have advanced information, and if we know something well in advance of a board agenda, whether it's, you know, next month, two months from now, hey, you know, staff, this is coming up, we're going to need this information and so forth, and, and I think for the most part, you know, this board, I think we can say as a county, we work very hard at that and, and do a fairly good job. And of course, I know there are other times, I mean, we're not going to have that luxury all the time, there are things that come up, it's a nature of business, right? Nature of government, things come up, and, you know, so for that, in, in, in times like that, and, and all this feedback from the board, Mr. Chairman's very valuable for us, and just in thinking out loud with Mr. Gwynn on the line, knowing, you know, he's worked with other clients, and, and Jim, you know, probably sees what's really working well and what can work well, maybe sometimes what doesn't work well, so it may be, and Jim, I know I'm putting you on the spot, passing this football to you, in, in terms of maybe coming back to the board with some thoughts, whether it's some of the Allegheny language that, that he mentioned, or maybe it's some of the other language, and knowing that, you know, we have, and one, one thing I would say, Mr. Chairman, you know, I would not want to, I know we've purposefully identified the Thursday after the Tuesday as a work session item, really for more discussion and, and really less action, but more thoughtful discussion. I think we've had a lot of good thoughtful discussion days, been very good. That said, I wouldn't want that day to become a, hey, let's pass the buck from Tuesday to Thursday on multiple items, and I know that's not the board's intent, but, and I, and I think, but we could, with some good thought and language, maybe working with Mr. Gwynn, Mr. Chairman, maybe we can come back with some, with, with a good way to address this, and, and of course, I, I'll, I'll actually open that up to our staff, because, Mr. Chairman, because that's where the rubber meets the road, and of course, Mr. Gwynn's on the line too, they, you know, you're only as strong as your team, so.
Mr. Gwynn, you want to comment in here? Please?
Well, I mean, I, I think I hear what the board is saying. At the one hand, on the one hand, you can't be handcuffed too much. On the other hand, you do have to make sure that you get a control over, and, and I mean no offense, this is just the best word I can use to say it, is impulse-type things, when you do want to think about it a little more. I, I get Chris's concern about shifting too much to Thursday, so to me, it would seem like if something comes up on Tuesday that, that is going to require action and it requires spending, and it's not on the agenda, then that's something that probably ought to be moved to Thursday. And that gives everybody time to think about it or whatever. Things that are on the agenda need be dealt with the night of the agenda, you know, you know, don't, and if you're not going to do it then, you probably should table it the next meeting and not, you know, the next monthly meeting and not the next two days. And that, and so that gives you some flexibility, but it'll also take you off the hook if somebody wants to look up and say, hey, that's brand new, I hadn't thought about it, hadn't heard it, can we table it till Thursday so I can give it some thought? And I, you know, any, anything that gives you an opportunity to consider all the different consequences, both intended and unintended, is a good thing. It, it, you know, things, generally legislation in haste ends up being regretted, or can, it's most likely to be compared to one that you had time to think about. So, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to draft whatever the board thinks is most workable.
Thank you. Mr. Sandy, Steve?
You figured I'd have something to say. I, I like Jim's idea, the only thing I would point out is, I think a lot of times these come up under board reports, which is on Thursday, so to make that work, may have to go back to board reports on Tuesday, so if one of those items comes up, you can discuss it and then punt till Thursday, just, just a thought, that it seems like that's when a lot of the, those items come up generally.
Other matters by supervisors.
Either county administrator's report or other items by, by board members, so.
We can do that. Good thought. Brian?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would echo some similar comments, I think most of my interaction with the board tends to be around the budget, tends to be around finances. I prefer the Davenport approach, which is to slow down and think about it. There's a lot of, especially as Mr. Sandy said, other matters by supervisors, where we're throwing options out there that staff has not heard of at, at any point until it's brought up in an open meeting. It is difficult for staff to try and wing it and figure out what is the account balance, what is the intended consequence, unintended consequences of maybe this action, especially when an item may implicate and involve other departments in that process. So it would certainly be, however we work that, whether we do the Tuesday and wait till Thursday, or we can, we can wait till the next month, but from, from just an idea of preparedness, I think for the most part, we've done a good job, I don't know there's been any real oops moments. But I know it puts a lot of stress on staff scrambling last minute to try and make sure we give the board the best information possible, because we do as staff, take that very seriously, that we inform you to the best extent of our ability. But I think sometimes those last-minute items do put a little pressure and maybe a little bit on staff to make sure that we do that correctly. So of course, if we always, if we ever make a mistake, we're very quick to inform the board, we were wrong, as we have a chance to go back and research it, but I do agree with Mr. Gwynn, Mr. Sandy, of course, Mr. Whitlow, the more time we can have on an item, the better. I think the worst situation for staff is it to come up under other matters by supervisors, and at the very least, Mr. Whitlow hasn't been made aware that you might want to bring it up, because at least at that point, staff has had time to, to vet it to the best of their ability based on the necessary resources.
Randy?
I'll kind of echo what Brian just said, I, I think anytime we could get it as an agenda item and not brought up as, as other issues by supervisors, it would help, because it kind of gives us a heads up as to what we need to be looking at. When we get out of here, like, late at night, and it's nine o'clock, and something comes flying out that we weren't expecting, we truly only have one day to really look into that before our next board meeting, because we're already getting ready for Thursday. So anytime we can get a heads up on that, that would really help. And also really considering the magnitude of the decision, whether or not it really needs to be punted to Thursday or until the next month. It's just going to be very hard to vet a very large-scale decision with multiple departments and get it back to you on Thursday, and probably make a more educated decision than we could have on Tuesday.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry, can I just say something about what Brandy said?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I was just going to say that my initial intention was not just to have Thursday as an option, it would be the next month, but you use Thursday if it was needed in a particular circumstance.
Madam Clerk? You got any comment or objection here? I'm going to open it up to you ladies two, planning zoning, economic development.
Danny says no.
If you got, if you got a thought, say what's on your mind. Or if you don't have anything, you don't have anything. Okay. Dan?
I think you all have brought up good points. Having time to make informed decisions allows us to present you with all the facts.
Okay, I think, I think.
No one has ever ruled patience. No one has ever ruled having patience, you know?
True.
Wish I had been patient.
True.
Cool, cool. That's been a good discussion, I think we do need to move other matters by supervisors in the, well, we've been getting Mr. Gwynn's report on Tuesday, and other matters by supervisors, and by Chris's report, we need to move it back to Tuesday from Thursday, and that'll give, if it is something that needs to be done, it'll give a day there for staff and for us, that we can bring it back, is everybody, can we do that? Is everybody, can we do that? Do we need to vote on that, because we voted on that before, or can we just do that by consensus, Madam Clerk? Is it, is it everybody consensus? Thumbs up on everybody to move other matters by supervisors and Chris's report back to Tuesday from Thursday. Dan?
I agree.
Okay, everybody, all right, so we got a consensus on that, so we'll move other matters back to Tuesday on that. Okay, good, good input. Now, see, I, I like this. I do, I hope the rest of y'all, but I like this kind of workshop. I mean, we actually got some stuff accomplished today, I feel like we have. Now, we're getting ready to go into closed session, I was hoping we could do it in here so that Dan and Jim would not have to recall in, but it seems to me like that we're probably gonna have to. Madam Clerk, we'll give you a phone number that you'll have to call, so we can go in the back, because it's some concerns of the privacy, even though they turn the cameras off, if it's still gonna be secure, unless you've got something worked out.
Yeah, I mean, you can try it here, and I can go over there and check out my last call.
So, Ronnie, I'll call into a new number that Amy's gonna send me now via text, is that what you said?
Yeah, let, let's, let's just go ahead and, and get it worked out next time because of the moving back, and we can go ahead and get our food. If you'll just give Dan and Jim the new number that they need to call to go in yonder, we'll just do it that way. Yep? In the conference room.
VCR.
In the VCR, yes. All right, wait a minute now, wait a minute before we take off. Tim's got something to read.
Yeah, all right. Mr. Chairman, the Franklin County Board of Supervisors will motion to enter into a closed meeting in accordance with 2.2-3711 A3, discussion of the acquisition of real property or the disposition of real property, A7, consultation with legal counsel on briefings by staff about litigation or other specific matters requiring legal advice, A29, discussion of terms of a public contract of the Code of Virginia as amended.
I need a second. Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call, please?
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yep.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Are they in your?
Chairman, I certify that only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which this certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies.
Need a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call, please?
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yep.
Supervisor Jamison?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. Okay, now it's come time for our annual report for our other matters, so I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Whitlow.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few things here on, on the report, just to like to thank Virginia's Blue Ridge and our tourism staff and, and others that were involved this last weekend. Couple of big events in the county was Antique Farm Days there at the Recreation Park, very good event, very well attended this Father's Day weekend, and then also the first American Jet Ski Association Jet Ski Race there at Smith Mountain Lake, wonderful event, really, really good things, and a great partnership, got a lot of exposure from Virginia's Blue Ridge and others. And, coming up later this month, of course, the Independence Day Festival will be held at the Franklin County High School on June 28th, and as we look ahead to July, I know we're kind of, there's dog days of summer, if you will, getting into the hot part of the summer, but concerts by canoe at Full Pot Lake, there's another one on July 12th, and the Flickin' Jaws at Smith Mountain Lake Community Park, don't ask me what that may be, that's July 19th, check with Parks and Rec on that. Of course, Pirate Days every year down at the lake, and the Fishers of Men, another big championship legacy series of fishing tournament at Smith Mountain Lake. The Fishers of Men tournaments years ago were popular here, and just in recent years, they've resurrected those and been coming back and very, very popular, and so stay tuned for those. In addition to some other matters, Mr. Chairman, speaking of events, and I'll pass this out, one's coming up, if you all remember, we belong, of course, every year, VCO, VCO, VACO, Virginia Association of Counties, Regions 10 and 12 combine, and they do their summer efforts or their summer meetings. And of course, the last couple of years, we've hosted here in Franklin County at the Franklinson the last two years. This year, Floyd County will be hosting this at the Chateau Morset, and that's on Wednesday, July the 10th, from 1:00 to 3:00. And of course, our good friends in the region will be there, as well as our VACO staff. It's a good time, of course, the legislators are invited to attend, it's a, it's a time really, to really get ahead early on on legislative agenda items. And one thing specifically that has come up in recent weeks, and we've shared this with the board in some communication, and this is one that the Association of Counties, the National Association of Counties, as well as the National League of Cities, there's a lot coming down from the U.S. Department of Labor, specifically OSHA, that will affect our volunteer fire and EMS departments significantly so, and, and staff departments. And, Mr. Chairman, you often have talked about unfunded mandates, this is one that's pretty significant in several areas, and may be very well intended with some good things, but it, it doesn't come with federal dollars, and, and that's where the issue is. It's not that some of these things are not bad ideas, it's just the fact that the feds sometimes pass them down, as we know, unfunded. And so, staff, I know Steve and Chief Fowler have been working with VACO already and the VACO staff, expressing some concerns. And in addition, most recently to our delegate, Will Davis, was in a meeting with Chief Fowler, expressing those concerns early on. And so, there is a time that we need to respond, and I think it's later in July, by July the 22nd, if our board would wish for staff to send a communication that we can send back to NACO, the National Association of Counties, as well as VACO regarding this legislative agenda item. And then this is probably something, maybe if there's anyone attending on Wednesday, July 10th with, up in Floyd, with the, with the regional, with VACO in that regional meeting, it may be something that we would want to talk with our colleagues about. So, if, if you all would just let staff know, if there's some consensus, I think we can bring back some language, maybe I'm looking at Mr. Sandy, and we can work with our public safety staff, it may be at the July 16th meeting, we can also bring that back to you all as well.
I would, I'll tell you now, I, I want to attend this myself, and if we want to come up with a, if we want to come up with a statement or anything, I'll be happy to, to read. Yeah, I, I'll have to say that this is only about five miles from the cabin. So, yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else wanting to attend? Lori wants to attend.
Okay.
Mike wants to attend.
Okay.
Tim wants to attend.
All right. So that's Lori, Tim, Ronnie, Mike, and if, if others, you know, find that they may want to attend, just let our office know, let me know, let Lori know, Amy in our office, and we'll, and if we want to, if some of us want a carpool up, we'll, we'll coordinate back with the board on that.
Lori, you want to help with staff, you, you like, you're pretty good with this, so, like the statements in, to VACO?
Sure.
You can help, help with that?
Of course.
If you do a prepared statement, I'll be happy to-
Okay.
-to read it. Is that okay? Is that okay with the rest of you guys?
I know you all have championed a lot of things in terms of rural transportation, and that's a big one for Floyd County unpaid-
I like some big time for Floyd County on B-Dot.
Can I bring some pom poms with me?
As a matter of fact, if you'll come a little bit early, I'll show you a route.
I'd rather see you have a flaming baton.
I could do that. Yeah.
Would like to advise the board, of course, last month, it was only consent agenda, where we applied for the Virginia Department of Health, a community paramedic program, if you all recall, was an opportunity where we can get up to about $100,000. We have been advised, it looks like we're going to receive that funding, and, and what that does is, we'll help pay for, it'd be a trial position, a paramedic position, but really geared towards, and I think we mentioned to you all last month, in, in a community effort, not just running to, on a fire EMS call, of course, that could be part of it, but then also in, in the community to really cut down on what we call the frequent flyers, if you will, to call, you know, Ms. Jones, or pick your name, or Mr. Smith, or whoever, to check in and see how they're doing, from that standpoint, from a community health standpoint. So, that is all being put together, I think it's a good partnership, I think we have something to do, something really unique here from a pilot standpoint, and so I just wanted to, to note that. In addition, we had sent out some information and just, you know, let the board know that now that, I guess, MVP from, is, I guess, the, the official authorization to put MVP in service, that, and, and as well as county staff, working with Rowan Oak Gas in terms of distribution, et cetera, and we will get numbers to you, we, we've got emergency 24-hour numbers that have been shared with us, we'll get those out to the board in the event that someone has a concern. In addition, staff is working with the companies on some training, public, with public safety, fire, EMS as well. They've done that all along, but some more additional recent training that they'll be undertaking. There is the VACO Summit that is in August, I believe it's August the 15th, I believe?
It's the 15th.
The 15th, it's a Wednesday, that's also the night that we kick off the fair, the county fair, tentatively, potentially, Secretary of Agriculture Lore is tentatively scheduled to be with us at the kickoff of the fair on the 15th, or on the 14th, rather, and the 15th being the Thursday. That is a one-day session in Richmond, and we'll get information to the board, I think we've got to some of you, some of you may be attending that as well, those sessions are always really good at, at the VACO meetings there in Richmond. And then I'll mention, and this is a matter that will be on next, likely next month's agenda, we've worked with STEP Incorporated, we put some information in your weekly communication regarding a potential community development block grant application, where STEP Incorporated would be the, essentially would be the manager and the project manager and essentially do all the work. However, localities can be, are the only ones that can be the applicant. And, and essentially STEP is reviewing their facilities that they have here and the facilities in the county that they, in terms of the programmatic piece, and they have an opportunity to receive some planning dollars, of course, they do a lot with their Life's Academy, early Head Start, right here in the county and so forth, and if they secure some of these dollars potentially through CDBG, it will be very instructive to them for their facilities like Life's Academy and, and their preschool Head Start initiative. It also may be an opportunity as they look at other facilities in the county as well. So, I just wanted to let you all know that that will likely be a July board item, it doesn't necessarily, the county is not necessarily, we're the applicant, but we're not necessarily being asked to manage this grant or this application, they would do so, there'll be more details on that, so I wanted, I wanted to mention that to the board. And I think, Mr. Chairman, I'm sure I'm gonna miss some other things, but those are the primary items that we have before you this evening, from a staff standpoint.
Thank you. All right, other matters by supervisor, Mr. James? Mr. Mitchell?
To echo what Chris said, me and I took two of my kids down to Antique Farm Days, and that is just a great dedication to the way things used to be, and, and when you sit there and look at some of those things, you'd think they came on the Mayflower, but when you really stand back and think, it wasn't that long ago. And it just really sets you back, and all the people that are there always really enjoy that. And the only other thing I had is I've received a chart today from Brandy on county leases from anywhere to a building, to a cell tower, to a whole plethora of things, and I would , I would recommend that all y'all get a copy of this. And the way some of these are set up is they're renewals on a three-year basis, and they automatically go, nobody has to do anything, it automatically rolls into the next one for the next three years. And I think on a future work session, we need to look into this and change the way that works, because, you know, we, we take the time to look at small, very minuscule things, but we're, but things like this are passing on a whim, and we need to change the way that business is done.
Randy, do you have a copy that's available for all of us, or can we get, get a copy?
I have printed copies for each of you tonight, and I'll eat them tomorrow at 12:00.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had, had my Ag Board meeting this month, and I want to really brag on Brandy, she comes to the Ag Board meetings, and she is really guiding the group, it's, it's making great progress she got, is it Piedmont Community Services, is that right? The, the two women that come-
Uh, West Piedmont.
West Piedmont come, and they're working on a one-to-five-year plan, so I think we finally really got some guidance, and Brandy has given them some great ideas and great information, I can't say enough for her help on that board, but it seems to be coming together, and, and I think in the future, they'll probably have a presentation for the board. Other than that, as a follow-up to Chris's comment about MVP, I'm concerned, I don't know if the rest of the board is aware of this, they had two leaks at Summit View of Mer Captain, and this was involving, from my understanding, Run Up Gas, I don't know if it was gas involved, but it was definitely the, the odorant that they put in there. The sheriff was not notified of this until after the fact, I think there needs to be some, some correlation, he, and I had a conversation with the sheriff about it after one of the captains went out there. A report was filed with the Pipeline Hazardous Material Safety Association, and I, and I would like for staff to get maybe a copy of the police report and the PHMSA report, and get the board updated on where all this stands, and maybe get Run Up Gas over here to talk to us about what their plans are and what they're gonna do at the business park, and just get the board a good update on how things are, are progressing along.
Yeah, that, that right there spawned, that probably is my fault, after the night, I think I called you on that.
Yeah, you did, yes, sir.
I got a phone call that night, about 10 minutes till 9:00, and I called, immediately called Chris, and I told, called and complained, I'll think of her name in a minute, one missing, it was-
Bonnie Law.
Bonnie Law. And I said, "Well, they need to call the fire department." So I came, I came here the next day, and Chris had already made a call, and we had a conference call with Run Up Gas. They have protocol in place. They immediately sent us the protocol over here, and it has been put into effect. It goes into the dispatch, there are certain people that are notified, and what you're asking for has already been put into effect, with the exception, and that's a good idea to maybe bring Run Up Gas over here to explain, but if you get a phone call, like I did that night, 10 minutes till 9:00, tell them to call the fire department. Because that's, but it goes in, when they call in now, it goes straight to Run Up Gas, and their procedures automatically go into effect, which they have a team that comes out and jumps on this. And now, I do not know their procedures, but it would be good for them to come and explain what their procedures are.
Right, so the public-
Unless you know, unless you know more, if he's called you back and told you more.
Yeah, only, only thing I would add, and as Mr. Thompson noted, Mr. Carter, we do have that information, I think we may have put it in last week's pack, at least the, the number, if not, we'll, we'll get the two numbers, okay, we'll get the two numbers for you all, there's two, one for MVP and one for Run Up Gas. There was, with the odorant and so forth, we do understand that evening, they were testing the new distribution station and so forth around 4:00 in the afternoon, and that was some of the, it wasn't a leak in the line per se, it was the odorant and the testing and so forth, you know, from, from Run Up Gas, so, but I will make, we'll get that information out to you all, and maybe we can get an update, Mr. Carter then, from, from Run Up Gas for the board.
And, and the only other comment I'll make, and, and most of you all weren't on the board, but I don't know if you remember, I had requested one time that MVP put Mer Captain in the line and got a lot of blowback from some former supervisors. This is the odorant that smells like rotten eggs, so you know if there's a leak, well, that's at the Run Up Gas tap, but the rest of that pipeline, there's no odorant in it, so if there's a leak, you're not gonna know it until something happens. I think that's a very scary thing for most of our citizens, and I want the board to be aware of that.
And as addition two to that, Chris and I rode over there the next day, and we were quickly met with a delegation of people wanting to know what we were doing and who we were and what we wanted. And I mean, they were Run Up Gas, it was, it was probably- It was, it was probably 12 or 15 people there.
Yeah.
And it was Run-up Gas and MVP and the...
At the Summit View?
Yes.
Some of the federal regulators.
Several regulators. I mean, this was the, the very next day. And we, and they said, you know, and they, they, they said, this, this, they did say this, they asked us to leave, and they said that they were going to have an open house and that the board supervisors would be invited over to tour. Now, you can see, you can see what they've got over there now, but they got a fence around it, and then they put them slats in it, so you, you can see some pipes sticking out if you haven't been over there, but that's all you see. But we, we were, we were met before we got down there.
Because, because it's still an active construction site.
It's still an active construction site. So, yeah, we were met down there.
They were doing their job.
With that, I'll, I'll save mine for later.
I have just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. We were talking a little bit offline with Mr. Whitlow, the voting precincts, Burnt Chimney, and, you know, making sure that we're staying on top with Kay about how we're going to deal with that, with that school closure. And then what I added to that conversation was the Scruggs precinct with their training center that's there where you vote at Scruggs, the separate building that's up on Dudley Amos. The leadership of Scruggs has talked to me for quite some time, years, about the fact that that voting precinct is not, as an example, ADA compliant, and it needs some stuff done to it. And Scruggs has always been of the opinion that it was going to be left upon them to take care of that building in, in terms of it being compliant as a voting precinct. And I don't agree with that. I would like to see us get in contact with Chief Moore and find out exactly what the status of that building is as it relates to a voting precinct. And we need to make sure that we understand what needs to be done there and that we are in compliance on that. I wanted to bring up as well legislative agenda for this board. I'm working, I had a conference call with Jeremy Bennett at VACO and the Chair of the Legislative, or the General Affairs Committee that I'm Vice Chair of at VACO. We're starting on our legislative agenda now at VACO. We're going to be starting on it now at the Allegheny Regional Commission. And the point is, I'm learning some things, whereas the types of things I think that our board is really interested in doing and seeing through legislatively. I would really love for us to start putting this on our radar for possibly an August discussion, it may be a work session. And I can give you some, some information ahead of time, but I think we need to go ahead definitely and carve in our date in November for our legislative luncheon. But I think also, given that this is, we're going to be moving into the second year of the biennial budget, I think that there are going to be some things that we need to address from amendment perspective, from, you know, from a code amendment that we can maybe accomplish in an off-year, you know, during the middle of the biennial budget. But I think the sooner we can get started on this, get our hands around it, and I'll certainly bring any information I get, you know, forward to help us make sure that we're in that good advocacy position. But I, I just wanted to get it on your radar so that we can really, you know, I think we're having impact. I think this region's having impact. I just don't think we're quite there in terms of, you know, all of our counties gelling together and making, making this, you know, with a, with one voice, these things that's important to us. So that's on the radar, if you all concur with me on that. I just wanted to also remind the board and maybe ask Mr. Whitlow and Chairman Thompson, I really think that we need to get re-engaged with our strategic plan. And we've got, we got kind of halfway there last time. And what I would suggest is that we dedicate, whether it's a half a day or a full day off-site, review what we've done. We've got two new supervisors. Bring everybody aboard on where we are and where we want to go strategically, because that strategic plan, piggybacking on with our capital improvement plan and our budget, those three things need to be working in tandem at the end of the day. And I think our strategic plan, if we could get that done this summer, it would set staff up to start the budgeting process this fall, and it would be very helpful to us when we get our budget in early 2025. So, Mr. Chairman, I would like to see if, if the board's in consensus to give some direction to Chris.
You're going to be happy with that because Chris and I just recently were talking about a summit and that being a huge part of it, and he's in the process now of lining that up and setting that up.
Excellent.
And it's sooner better than later. And so, the, I mean, we, we were just talking about that the other day, and so, yes, that's already in the making. And, well, we didn't know where it was going to be, where it's going to be here. Like, it's not, I don't think it's necessary that we've got to pay for a place when we got this here, but if we could get like out there where we were at last time at Valley Star, that room out there, that was, that was really nice. If not, right here is fine. But, yeah, we're already working on it.
I will, I will reach out to our office, reach out to the board members. It will likely be sometime with vacation schedules and so forth with staff. It may be sometime, you know, late August, early September, right, right before that budgetary season kicks in, in the fall and the winter and so forth. But we will, we will look to do that and see everyone's availability and, yeah.
And the only other thing, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to bring up, and I don't really know what the right time is.
Right now.
I think that, given how far we came on our current technical education discussions, all the way up to the point of talking with Davenport to, to look at how we're structuring debt, I do think that there's been some, I think some of us on the board have been thinking a little bit differently. I know collectively, we've talked about maybe looking at Katski Center, looking, you know, alternatively to see if there's a way to accomplish the kind of project that we feel we need. I don't want to lose momentum on getting this project off the ground, but I think that there are some scenarios that have entered the picture now that really, I, I would like to see us really discuss that and make some determinations about next steps and if the board is still in concurrence, you know, on the CTE program being as important as we've said it has been, and how we move to next steps, Mr. Chairman.
That, to me, that right there, you brought up a good point. The strategic plan, it may be this, and maybe we can find one more topic, be three major topics to discuss. Another, another good, maybe that would start the budget review. How do y'all feel about that? We could just talk about the strategic plan, the CTE, and then start the budget review at that point. That would be three major topics, and that would, that would take up, you know, if we started that morning around nine o'clock or so, we'd probably be there at four, five o'clock in the evening. Those three major topics, but that, yeah, that, that's strategic. Those for the new members on there, that's pretty big. That's the strategic plan. That's, that's your ideas of where you see this county going in the future. And it's, it's pretty major. And it's, it really gives a good guide for staff, gives them leadership and direction of where this sitting board is where we're looking at. And your views, everybody gets to put their two cents in, and, and it's not just, well, I like to see us go ABC, but you'll have time to say why you think that's a good idea and, and your reasoning behind. It's, it gives us really good, or gives county staff really good insight on where things are going, where you would like to see things going. And then the CTE, I know, I know there was some, a lot, when that happened with the closing of some schools, I know some minds got changed, and I don't know if it's still there or, you know, where, where we need to go and think of that. And then the starting of the new budget process procedures, or even, not necessarily new, but you all know, you've been on the board long enough, you've just been on here five days, you know that budget is ongoing all the time. I mean, we talked about it tonight and everything. So, yeah, that's, but that, yeah, the, the summit, the summit is, we've already been talking, Chris has already been working on it, and it's, yeah, it's, it's, that's pretty big. Mr. James?
Where, where does the school get on the CTE building now? Has anybody talked to them at all?
I haven't. Lori probably has.
I haven't talked to them. I mean, really, once the, the LCI hit and we had the reassessments, things just came to a standstill. Where we were prior to that was they were waiting on us.
They were waiting on us, and it was, it was fun and to go ahead with engineering, I think.
Yeah, there was, yeah, there was money that needed to be drawn down to do, to get the A and E fully developed.
Have we heard anything from them since?
No, I think everything's been on a pause, Marshall. And, you know, depending upon, if we need to revisit the scope, that's what we need to decide, or whatever, you know, that just, whatever the pleasure of the board is. But I, I think that we've gotten over some major humps, and I think we've got to get refocused back on the reasons that this board fully supported CTE and why. And that hasn't changed. Those needs have not changed. What may have changed is the new build versus maybe trying to do, you know, an adapted reuse of, of a different location perhaps.
One thing I will say about the CTE, I personally think there's potential there to bring students back into the school system.
Absolutely.
And I think that's a big factor we need to consider. What, what it looks like moving forward, I don't know, but I think we need to definitely discuss it.
Well, and I think for me, from, if I'm really putting on my supervisor hat, you know, when I think about curriculum with advanced manufacturing as an example, and we're trying to check all the boxes with the Regional Partnership for Economic Development, and we can start really demonstrating that we have a concentrated effort on developing workforce here, I think that's going to help us, again, check some of those boxes off and draw a good employer or two to Summit View. So it, it's just about attacking this thing from a well-rounded perspective.
I do think as an addition that when we do have this summit, that we should invite Dr. Sears and Chairman or at least one member of the school board to be there. If there's questions or just for input, I think that would be a good idea. I think we need to dedicate the entire morning though, Chris, to strategic. And, and I don't know how y'all, I don't know if y'all noticed, well, the agenda, but on, on the chairman's agenda, there's no time today. In the morning, any time, no restrictions. And when we have that strategic plan, we don't need to have restrictions because I really, I really meant what I said earlier. This, to me, was one of the most productive work sessions we've had where everybody, you know, was wide open and, you know, was not in a rush, didn't feel like it was in a rush.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Dan, you got anything?
Yeah, I have a couple of things I wanted to mention, and, you know, I can hear you guys perfectly. I should have checked in. Can you hear me fine?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Now, now we can. There was a time earlier that it was a little bit difficult, but you must be closer to the mic now or to your phone.
No, it's the same, but anyway, so I, I wanted to first mention that we had a builder-developer forum in Union Hall at the new Glade Hill Fire Station, and we invited builders and developers in the area who might have an interest in investing in the Union Hall area. And so they came in over a lunch period. It was a two-hour meeting altogether. The, the county staff hit a home run in terms of, well, everything about the meeting, the logistics of the meeting, putting the meeting together. At, at the meeting, Chris gave an overview of the county, and then Stephanie Methina, she made a truncated presentation of the Union Hall Village Plan. All of that took about an hour, but then the most important part of the meeting was just opening it up to the builders and developers. And there were about 45 people there altogether, so it was really well-attended. And, and nobody dominated the conversation. There were a lot of people participating. I wrote up the minutes if you're interested. I don't need to take the time here. One, one of the most interesting things that came out of it, though, was the fact that they need to see sewer in the area, that you're not going to get housing, you're not going to get an interest in investment until you have sewer capacity. And so, yes, they, they liked the water, but the sewer was really top of mind for many of them. And the housing shortage was, was also top of mind, the fact that there is very little housing, both affordable and otherwise, it's just very little housing. Some of these construction guys have a very hard time maintaining crews in their area. They said they'll come in and build one house, but they're just not going to commute from Roanoke into this area without housing. So, so that was a, a real issue. There was a, a lot of support for short-term rentals as a way of helping us with the housing. So I thought that was interesting that that came up. So anyway, those, those were, that, that's just a, a quick summary of the meeting, but it was, it was just awesome to get all those people in, to see such strong support from the county and to, to see the county do so much together for this. Chris had, I think it was seven or eight staff members, and I think it was really helpful for them to come and hear, these are real people talking, you know, that this is where the rubber meets the road. So I thought everything about it was as, as good as I could hope it would be. I, I told Chris, the only improvement was that he had brought out the county checkbook and had written a check for $10 million, but aside from that, he couldn't do anything else better.
Bron?
So then, any questions on that, or I'll just move on? I, I have a couple more things.
Go ahead.
But I'll, I'll just pause there for...
There's... Go ahead.
Okay. So I wanted to add, request that we add three items to the agenda, and the first item is for the county staff to give us a short briefing. You know, I envisioned 15 minutes of briefing, 15 minutes of questions, not to be prescriptive, but this is not a long session. The, the county has contracted with a consultant to do, to update the plan for the Smith Farm. And because it's in my area, I've had to become a real student of what's going on and really understand it. But I, I realize the rest of the board members, they don't, they haven't had to get up to date on what's going on. Besides, Steve, you know, gave an awesome presentation on the nutrient and stream credits, and so we understand that, but there's a lot more to going about what's going on at the Smith Farm, and it has the potential to benefit all of the other areas. And so I thought it would be really interesting, just for a short briefing, on what's going on. So that was item one. And then, item two, I think it was three months ago, there was a request for the county to change ambulances, to swap an ambulance from one location to the next. And, and the county staff was going to come back to us with two things. One was a discussion about how they make those kinds of decisions with the equipment, you know, going here and there. And then also a rationale about how they made that specific ambulance swap. And so I thought it might be timely for the county to come back and talk about that if, if maybe they're not ready, or, but if you're ready, that'd be great. So that was the second item to add. And then the third item, at last, the last meeting a month ago, I brought up four recommendations for the, the budget. This would be the '25, '26 budget, and each one of those is independent, but I realized unless we vote on those one by one, well, they're not going to be implemented. We're not giving direction to the county just for one person to talk about them. And so I would like to summarize those in a short paper for everybody, but to actually talk about them at that meeting and vote on them, one by one. And so those are the three things I'd like to add to the, the agenda.
I think the, the budget thing will be took care of in the budget review and the summit when we do that in there. The other, the other two with the county, that's up to the board members on the Smith Farm. As a matter of fact, I've got a thing on my list about the Smith Farm and the, the ambulances. That's up to the board. We can work those in. I think we can work those in. We can work those in, I think we can work those in, in a timely manner, in a workshop. Obviously, it wouldn't hurt anything, but it's up to you guys.
Mr. Chairman, we'll, unless there's time sensitivity, we'll have that Thursday after the July Board Week, we'll have that Thursday, perhaps? I don't know if you all have planned anything for that work session.
Nothing, nothing specifically, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think, um, for the, uh, July sixteenth meeting, we'll have a presentation, um, uh, but then I think it's the July eighteenth is the work session on the Thursday.
Yeah.
Um, and so, we haven't necessarily finalized or, or pinpointed specific things for that work session, so there is some time, uh, on that Thursday unless, and I'm looking at staff, the clerk is busy, I know we didn't, you know, bring, bring our list, and we'll have a debrief tomorrow, but I can't think of anything, uh, and I'm not sure if we're doing broadband, which that's another meeting, but, and looking at Steve and Brian.
Yeah, the only thing I'd say is the ambulance maybe is an August discussion with our new director. There, there's been a number of things he's been working through and, and working on, so I'm not sure that he would be ready by July, but potentially August would be a good time for that discussion.
And then, maybe for the Smith Farm, potentially a briefing, I think, I don't wanna speak for Brandy, um, but I think perhaps we could be ready to have just a short brief, briefing to the board at maybe one of the July meetings.
Absolutely.
Um, yeah, and then-
Yeah, and I think a lot, oh, oh, I, I think a lot of the slides that, Brandy, you've helped me put together for the neighbor meeting would really be a good jumpstart for the board. A lot of the information we're presenting to the neighbors would be applicable to the board.
All right, anything else?
Well, Ron, so Ronnie, I, I don't think, I, I would prefer to not wait until the budget session, because these are things that are fresh in our mind. We just finished completing the budget, and it's a chance to really consider the lessons learned. It's all fresh in everybody's mind, and I think if we just, that months go by until we start with the budget, then it's just, it's gonna be old information. I, I don't see a reason why we couldn't bring them up and vote on each item one by one.
I, I don't see where it's, uh, the budget is such a vital part to this, and this is just my opinion, I don't see that, uh, I think this is another one of those things that we were talking about earlier, that we're really jumping the gun here. The, uh, we had fifteen sessions before the budget was even ours, that we went through, and there's a process to go through that we went there, and, and to me, to me, some of this thing, Dan, that you're talking about, you need to talk with Chris and staff about before it even comes to the board, because it's not our budget until staff turns it over to us. Now, that's how I see that, and we ended up in fifteen sessions, now I know a lot of them was during a regular session, but, uh, it's not our job, in my opinion, to micromanage staff on things like this. They have a procedure that they have to go through, and then, to me, I'm gonna be honest with you, buddy, I feel like you're trying to micromanage them. And, and it's, I don't, I don't see the necessity for such a big hurry on this, when we can sit down in, uh, August, which is only a couple months away, and talk these things out and understand what it is that you're trying to do, it's gonna take up a whole session on that. Now, that's just my thought, the rest of the board, the rest of the board can speak into it.
Ronnie, I, I don't think we're micromanaging, for example, one of the major recommendations was the board of supervisors negotiates with the school on the final budget. Well, that, that's a decision, that's a, a very high-level decision that is made, we're either, we delegate that to the county, or we manage it. That's, that's a big decision. I don't, that's not the kind of thing I talked to Chris about, that's the kind of thing I talked to the board about, to the board, the board to vote on.
All right, now, we had fifteen sessions prior to the, uh, budget getting ours, and I'm not really certain, because I didn't write them all down, how many sessions we had after. How many sessions do we need to have, buddy? Now, I'm asking you that point-blank, I wanna know.
I don't think we, I, I don't think we need half the sessions that we had. But that's just my personal opinion, I thought we had way more sessions than we needed to review it. But, but there are a number of recommendations that I'm just not gonna make small ones like that, I'm really focused on the big issues, like us not delegating the school budget to the county. That's a, that, to me, that's a, a key issue that we as a board should decide on. And if it goes up to vote and, and four people don't wanna do it, well, we don't do it, but at least, at least it's been considered. I'm, I'm just asking that the major recommendations I have coming out of the budget are considered, and so far, they're not considered. You know, I, I've already learned a few say they'll be taken up in a work session, or they're good ideas, it just means nothing's gonna happen to them, and, and I wanna see something happen to them. Even if they're voted down, I'm comforted that, hey, they're, at least they were considered by the board. And, and the only way they'll be considered is if they're voted on, and then it either goes on, it becomes part of the process in the future, or it dies. I'm okay with either, but at least it's been considered.
I'll, I'll-
And I'm willing to write the paper, I'm willing to write the paper to summarize the four points, and then let the board decide, point by point. Each, each one is an independent idea, I don't feel I'm micromanaging, uh, the county at all, and, and we as a board can make a decision on these big items.
I'll open it up to the rest of the board members, your thoughts on it. I think at the summit, there's plenty, and we can, we can do that at the summit, it, uh, it's only two months away, but I'll open it up to the rest of the board members, your thoughts. Marshall?
I, I'd tell you, I, if it, uh, excuse me, I got no problems with what Dan wants to do, we bring it forward, the board votes, either proceed with it or not, it shouldn't take that long, you know, and we, we put it to bed.
Nick?
I wanted to take that strategic pause on this one.
You are on fire tonight.
Cause I mean, really, I don't, it's up to every board member on how deep they wanna dig into that budget.
Yeah.
And as a supervisor, it, it's my job, in my opinion, to take the concerns of my constituents and make sure they're being addressed. But every supervisor, you get a line item budget, in the, for the schools and for the county, and it's up to each supervisor how far they wanna dig into it. As far as digging into the school systems budget, I, I'm not for that. I, I'm not gonna delve into that. And I would, I would be okay with having a conversation with, with Chris and other board members and county staff, just to get their take on it, but I, it, um, I'm, it's, I have the budget, I can dig into it, and we, like you said, we have fifteen sessions, I can say what I wanna say. And I'm okay with the way it is.
Carter?
I don't have a problem voting on his four things, but I agree with pretty much what Nick said, and as far as the school budget, regardless of what we give them, we don't have any control over how they spend that money. Once we give them sixty percent of the county's tax base, or whatever it is, they're gonna plug those, that money in wherever they want to, so I, I'm not for really delving into their, their budget deeply. And I'm like Nick, I spend a lot of time on that budget, I go through that book, if I have a question, I'll call Brian or, or whatever, one of my, one of you all as a colleague, but i- i- if he wants to bring him and us vote on him, we can vote on him.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll second that, if he, if he feels that it's important, and that's his job to bring it to us and wants us to vote on it, I'm fine with that too.
I echo what the other gentleman has said, uh, you know, I'm fine with the process that we currently have by relying on staff to combine the numbers and, and work, uh, put things together, bring it to us to consider, and then we have, we take what they give us, look through it, if we don't like something, don't understand something, we call and work it out.
Call it.
Uh, but I would be interested in seeing what Mr. Quinn's ideas are, and, and if we need to take a vote on it, we take a vote on it. Uh, I like to, I like for him to, you know, write down what his ideas are, because we really can't tell a whole lot over the phone, but, uh, and, and bring it so that we can see it and give it an honest consideration.
Lori?
Thank you. Um, I think, I think, obviously, we don't have those four topics in front of us, I've, I've seen something we've seen that's got him on it. I think, I don't think that there's a lot to do with, um, and I, and Dan can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think it's about how many work sessions, and I don't think it's about how we dive or don't dive into the budget when we get it. Some of the things I think Dan might present has to do with process. As an example, one of the things was about how we might ask Chris to present some type of consolidated overview, um, when we get the budget from him, that as an example, might say, these are our requested adds, these are our requested deletions, these are the amounts, and just kinda bring an analysis of the hows and whys, and which would, I think, save some time. I think some of Dan's recommendations may go in that direction, in terms of how to make, um, a more consolidated approach to how staff maybe walks into budget to bring it to us. And I think from the school budget perspective, I think, when, when we think about not, I don't think we're being asked to manage the school's budget. We have an allocation, and like, when we get the school's budget from Chris, um, Chris takes feedback from us, um, you know, just offline, but I think in terms of whether, as an example, the school's funding is, um, if it's increased, if it's, um, funded the same way it was last year, if we cut their funding allocation, those are decisions that we need to make. And Chris would bring those, um, those points to us when we get our budget. But I think what Dan is saying is, we need to have a deliberate discussion and understand what Chris is recommending, more so than just, you know, recommending certain amounts for certain things. We need to know what the consequences are of cuts to the school's budget and where, on the capital side, as well as on the operational side. I think that's fair, um, I think it's fair, and I know that, you know, Chris brings his budget to us, and it's all about, you know, the numbers need to work and they need to be appropriate for the functionality of the county. Um, but my assertion, and Dan can tell me if I'm wrong, I'm thinking some of the things he wants to bring forward is about enhancing and, and bringing a process to bear that staff is aware of when they start their budget process in the fall, early fall they're starting, and that they have an expectation of what the board would like to see in terms of the product that we would like for them to work on in terms of how they gather their information and bring it to us, so that we can expect it to come to us in a certain format. I think that's fair. But I, I, I think the school allocation is all about understanding, uh, the proposed cuts or additions to the school's budget, rather than just looking at them lump sum. Dan, am I getting any of that right?
No, you are on the school, and, you know, the fact that it's a hundred-million-dollar budget, that, that seemed worthy of digging into it, and I, and I really do wanna understand, if you cut their budget, what are the implications? This year, the county cut their budget, we had no idea what the implications were, and I think it was fair for us to understand the implications of that cut and decide, yes, we're willing to live with those implications or not. And, and so, it's not digging into every line of the school budget, it, this is understanding the school budget at a macro level and the cuts that you're making, what's the impact of, um, of those to the school, just to play that one out. And then, the other point I'll make about, you talked about process, and I agree, it's very much on process. For, for example, we did not get a variance analysis where we could see, okay, the total budget last year was X, this year it's, um, seventeen million dollars, uh, uh, or, what was it, thirteen million dollars higher, and here are the big pieces. A one-page variance analysis would have helped all of us so much, and, and would have, like, got, given us a roadmap to where we needed to look in the budget, but we didn't have that variance analysis, and this is not a lot of work, but it's the kind of thing I think we need to ask the county for, so we can do a better job at looking at the budget. I mean, that's just the second item, for example, and I, I can write up a little executive summary for each one of these, and, and I think it would be helpful for people to understand them.
I think what I'm hearing is a consensus, you can write it up, and if you can do it by the July or August, either one, but there will not be a vote at that time, because it was plain earlier today that we're not gonna do this knee-jerk stuff anymore.
Can we ask-
It was very, it was very plain with that.
Can we ask Mr. Whitlow what his thoughts are?
Go ahead, interrupt, go ahead and say what you gotta say, Lori.
I just said it.
You've done that, go ahead, say it.
I just said it.
Please repeat it.
I'd like to hear Mr. Whitlow's comments.
Go ahead, Chris, and then I'll finish what I was saying.
Um, ju- just a couple of things, um, yeah, of course, you know, staff will bring back, you know, whatever information that we may need, whether, you know, that's at a September strategic planning session, or whether that's sooner, you know, at the, at the next board meeting, or maybe July eighteenth afternoon work session and so forth. I think, Dan, just a couple of things, you know, in, in, in hearing you out, I think that, you know, that's, that's instructive for, for us, uh, that may be some helpful things, the one-page variance analysis that you, that you ask, and I, we did some of that, it may have not been in the format, maybe, Dan, that, that, uh, I know Mr. Carter came back, you know, that, that one session and reviewed, uh, several things, but, but, but I wanna make clear too, just for the record, that, you know, the county this year did not cut the school, um, budget year over year. Just wanna make sure that everyone understands, we, we funded the schools to the tune of about one-point-four million in additional dollars, uh, to our school system in new local county dollars, and I think that's very important, just, just for the record. Uh, but, but, um, it may have not necessarily, and that's a common thing in, 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 in school systems and in, in county and city governments in Virginia, that, you know, a lot of times you may hear, you know, that the school system's budgets were cut. Well, not necessarily, they may have not received the entire request, the request may have, you know, may have not been fully funded as to the request, so there are some things, I think, I just wanted to set that record straight, and, but there may be some things, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you know, whatever the pleasure of the board is, in the timing of that, if the board wants to discuss that, July, September, whenever it is, um, i- i- it could be helpful for us, and any information, um, that any of the board members, not just Mr. Quinn, but others, get to us, we'll, we can provide that information.
Anything else? Dan, you got anything else to say?
Uh, I would just add that I'm, I'm, I, I don't believe my request is the knee-jerk reaction, because I presented these ideas a month ago, and now I would provide a, an executive summary for us to work on in July, so I think there's, it, it's not like we're presenting the idea and asking for an immediate vote, I did present them a month ago, and so I think it seems fair that two months later, we could vote on them.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
All right, I have a couple of things, uh, as a segue into what's going on, it's been mentioned by a couple different ones about the Smith Farm, the mess that's down there, and then here recently, the tires. Uh, I'd like for us to have a, and I know you're working on that, a summary of what's going on, and I think the rest of them, uh, Mr. Brown's had that, I mean, he had that farm down there way before, uh, the county ever owned it, and was leasing it from the, the landowners there. So that costs, it, it's a lot of tires down there, and it is, it is quite a mess, uh, I rode down there, I rode down there after Mike was talking about it, and, uh, it is, it i- it is in need of, uh, some TLC.
Yeah, and we've been in contact with Mr. Brown, um, and also Jeff Golden, and, um, Mr. Brown has agreed that he'll help us load up the tires, we're just waiting until Mr. Golden has some drivers available, which is probably gonna be late summer, so if he can have drivers come down there for us to remove the tires, uh, Monty Brown has agreed that he would help us load them up so that we don't have to rent any equipment. Um, we would have to wait until the end of the summer until we had staff availability, however.
You need to watch for snakes and bees now.
Yes, there's a lot of snakes and ticks right there, I will say.
Those things are bad.
Hey, hey, Ronnie, Ronnie, I can add a little bit to that, as I was rooting around, trying to find documents, the deed and Mr. Smith's will and the purchase and sale agreement and so forth, I, I ended up talking to a lot of people trying to collect history, and one of those was Monty Brown. And because I had him on the line to talk about the history, I did ask him about the tires, and he said that he really, um, has put the blame, if you will, on others that have dumped tires here and there around the farm, and, and he's kind of dutifully collected the tires and put them in one, one pile, so he wasn't taking blame for the tires being there, but he did, as, uh, Brandy just brought up, he's more than willing to use his loader to, to put them, take them from the tile, up his pile and put them in a container.
Okay, thank you. And I know that, uh, Mr. Dillon came and talked about the roadway, uh, there at the fairground, uh, for handicap. It's my understanding that the last fair meeting that we had- for handicap, it's my understanding at the last fair meeting that we had, that Paul and staff goes in there and takes brooms and sweeps that up, tries to clean it up so that people can get down through there, handicap, and it's quite a problem. And I know it's out of the budget, and maybe next year that we can work that in, if we can't do it some way this year into that, but I just wanted to do a little bit, to say that there, Kevin talked about that at length, that how that was working. And then, I know this is a done deal, and I really appreciate Tim taking that and working with that with the day off, the extra day off, but as a, on the, the fifth of, of July, but with the rest of the board's agreeance, I would like to see staff generate a letter. When I talked to Kevin at our last meeting, we're having a lot of problems, or, we, well, we are, the county, with getting volunteers to help with the fair. And I would like to see a letter generated, and maybe even something put in the check stubs, that if county staff, the school has an incentive program, that's why they have all of the help that they have when they have school days and things, because they have, their teachers get credit for that, but with, not nothing mandatory, nothing at all mandatory, but I'd like to see a letter drafted requesting county staff if they could donate a couple hours to help at the fair. Nothing mandatory, you don't have to if you don't want to, but give them a number that they can call, because they can work helping with the parking, they can help with the displays, there's a cart that runs around selling the ice to the vendors, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done, putting on those wristbands, and if they could give, I mean, you know, you got four days there, and give us a couple hours, and, and, and help that, and with the number generated to go to Kevin or to Linda out here, and I would like to see, see that, and I hope that there's a majority, Tim, what about the rest of y'all? I mean, nothing mandatory, ain't making nobody do nothing, just asking for help with the fair. And with that being said, I have nothing else to say, anybody else got anything to say?
Hey, hey Ronnie, just on that point, one thing I would offer, you know, now, I'm, I'm communicating to so many people via Facebook, and, and also, an email, a regular email newsletter, that I could appeal to people to volunteer for that also, you know, you never, it's just another communication channel to try to get some people, so if, if, if there's a paragraph written up, or there's a little flyer, whatever, I would, I would put that online and see if I can get some volunteers to help out.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we stand recessed until July the sixteenth, three thousand, uh, three-